I want to call the May 21st, 2020 meeting of the Fairmont Municipal Planning Commission to order. We're again holding this meeting under the Governor Lee's Executive Order Number 16, extended by Executive Order 34, which in effect is, which is in effect until June 30th of 2020 at 11:59 Central Daylight Time. We have access available on Charter Channel 193 and TDS Channel 3. Also, it's being recorded and will be available on the View for Fairmont YouTube channel. We've announced in advance, any questions or comments on agenda items or community form, please be submitted, or submitted, I'm sorry, by 12 o'clock today, March, May the 21st. This was, has been advertised to do that. They will be read into the meeting whenever the item associated with the comments come up. All Fairmont Municipal Planning Commission meetings will be held in public as per state law of Tennessee. All votes taken tonight will be roll call votes. The planning director will call the roll. We have a vote that we need to do. Again, I will read the agenda items. Mark Shipley, planning director, will describe the item and a motion will be made in a second and then I'll call on members present to make comments or ask questions of Mr. Shipley. And then I will call each one of you individually to ask any questions or make comments. Please wait until you're called on. We'll go down kind of the seating chart with that. We will then introduce the applicant and ask them to state their name, address, and they can comment and ask questions on their item when it comes up. Then when we're through, planning commission members will be called on for questions and comments from the applicant as well. Then we will, at that point, ask if there's any changes to the motion, and if there is, we will go through that. If not, Mark will do a roll call vote. Everything is by roll call vote. So we'll move on to the approval of the agenda. Staff recommends approval of the agenda as submitted. Do we have any other questions or comments about that?
It's Saint Clair move for approval.
Do I have a second? Second, Kyle.
All those in favor?
Let me record that out. I guess, let me do a roll call on it and we can also see who all's here. Commissioner Myers, I think he's traveling, so he's probably going to be absent. Commissioner Dick?
Here. Did you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Russ?
Commissioner Russ, aye.
Commissioner Kyle?
Aye.
Commissioner Green?
Here, aye.
Vice Chairman Saint Clair?
Aye.
Chairman Holliday?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Povlin?
Vice Mayor Povlin here.
Mayor Williams? Mayor Williams? Sounds like it's 7-0 with Myers and Williams not available for this, this vote, so.
See, Mr. Williams on the screen here, so maybe he's had an audio.
Okay.
Okay, moving on to approval of the minutes for the April 16th, 2020 meeting. Again, staff recommends approval of the minutes as submitted. Any comments or questions on that?
I have a change amendment. This is Vice Mayor Povlin. On discussion item, the number three, after a short discussion, a motion was made by Commissioner Saint Clair to follow staff's recommendation. I seconded that motion. I probably need to show up in that. Did you get that, Mark?
Yeah, let's see here.
On the KUB gas lines.
Yeah. Motion was made by, yeah, okay, yeah, I missed that and I seconded that. Vice Mayor Povlin, yeah.
That was all I had for changes.
Yeah, I got you. I can make that change.
Okay, so I'm going to move to approve with the amended minutes.
Commissioner Saint Clair?
All those in favor, Mark?
Okay, Commissioner, I'm just not going to call Myers out because he's absent. Commissioner Dick?
Approved.
Commissioner Russ?
Aye.
Commissioner Kyle?
Aye.
Commissioner Green?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Saint Clair?
Aye.
Chairman Holliday?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Povlin?
Aye.
Mayor Williams?
Aye.
Ah, okay. Got him back. Okay, good. All right, and I know we have a student representative, Melanie's here. We, I don't want to ask her for the vote, but she's, I did notice that she was in the meeting, so that's good. And, all right, so we're ready for the next item then.
Okay, item number three, discussion in public hearing under request for 5G fiber installation along portions of North Campbell Station Road, Haron Road, Cottage Creek subdivision, and portions of the Cove at Turkey Creek, Stone Crest, Sweetbrier subdivision, subdivision, and West End Avenue, Mastech contractor.
This, let me just show you the map. This item was actually, is an expansion to a fiber extension site plan that was approved by the planning commission in December of last year. This is all underground, 5G installation using directional boring. We talked about this at the staff developer meeting on May 5th, and at that time I'd asked the applicant to see if they could use any of the existing overhead utility line system instead of having to, you know, disturb these areas in front of people's house lots. And my understanding is they, they looked into that and basically are proceeding with the fiber installation underground as originally proposed. So there apparently wasn't an opportunity to locate on the existing aerial installation that's in some of these areas. Not all of them have overhead utilities, but some do. So some of the things that we've kind of learned a lot with the, with these long, longer projects, not just fiber, but other utilities. So we've got some recommendations in relation to this item and probably future linear utility projects that involve potentially large areas. For this particular item, and we talked about everything I'm going to mention at the staff developer meeting, we feel that it's good, it would be best to break up this project into three different phases. You've got the Haron Road Sweetbrier subdivision phase would be one. Then you've got kind of the Stone Crest subdivision, Turkey Creek Cove, no Cove at Turkey Creek subdivision area. And then the, basically the arterial streets and collector streets, Kingston Pike Campbell Station Road, West End Avenue, and a small section on Far Side Drive. So allow the town staff to, you know, better manage these sections and have a little bit more control over what's going on and know where people are, that we know they're kind of confined to a certain area that's easier to keep control over, I guess. So some of the things that in relation to that procedurally that we're going to recommend with this item, and like I said, probably future linear projects, is to have a requirement for a pre and a post-construction review of the phase area. And what that would do is, would be, would allow us to, you know, walk or drive the section with applicant, with people that are actually going to be doing the work, and our staff can identify any areas where we may know of a conflict, particularly where a one call maybe wouldn't pick up a conflict like a traffic signals and things like that. And then verifying that the one calls have actually been completed, that things have been marked, the, and looking at locations where we could maybe pothole to see what kind of, you know, potential utility conflicts there may be in certain areas. And then, you know, when the project is, is finished or nearing completion, to walk the project area again and, you know, make sure that everything has been restored to its pre-utility installation. One of the things that we're going to be doing, and I'm sure most of the applicants will as well, is getting a good baseline documentation of the phase area on the front end so that we know what the conditions were before the work was initiated. The second recommendation is to actually provide a contact number for who's going to be in charge in these areas and include that in the public notification that they would be providing for any of the affected entities, whether it's residents or businesses. That way, if there's an issue that comes up, there's somebody that they can, can reach out to and hopefully get a quick resolution for the, for the issue. Providing the, the town, and in this case, the planning commission with public notification. This is, this is what was provided to the town. What Mastech has been doing, I guess, in some of these areas is hanging a flyer, I guess, on the doorknob, looks like, basically notifying the property owner of the work that's coming up. I think it would be helpful to, to make this a little bit more specific and actually kind of provide a range of date, you know, when the projects anticipated generally start and finish. And again, adding that contact information for the direct person that's, you know, supervising the project in this particular area. So, you know, I think it needs to be maybe enhanced in that regard a little bit. A letter of credit, you know, being provided for the three project areas, we could group that for all three instead of requiring one for each phase. In this case, the town engineer would, would need to establish a dollar amount for that. And that way, we've got a surety that something was damaged and it can get properly repaired that we've had the ability to, to go in there and get fixed. This particular project area does have some fiber installation in front of the outdoor classroom and the ambulance station in properties. So what we would ask the applicant there is to make sure that town staff is on site when they're working through those areas so that, you know, we can make sure that there aren't any issues that, that come up, because those are very important public properties for the town there. One thing that's in the set of drawings that was in the packet, and they didn't include that for this PowerPoint, as we'd be looking at over 100 slides just for that, is basically that this is only a fiber installation submittal and approval. This does not mean that this is approving any towers or any specific tower locations, small cell support towers I'm talking about. And so we need to make sure that that's clear in the, in the action taken here. This is purely for the fiber installation at this time. And let's see, there was, there were a few errors that we noticed in, in the documents. I noticed on pages 32, 53, and 56, there were some errors in street names and in street and locations. They would have a, a name of a street, then you look at the property address and it had a different street identification, so just cleaning up that. And then, like all of our linear utility projects, you provide it as-built when the project is, is complete for our records and also to help us in the event that future, you know, utility projects occur, we have a, a record of where this particular utility was, was installed, so. So that's generally the staff comments on this item. There are some public comments when the chairman is ready for me to go over those. It'll take me a little while to read through those, but I do have some comments from three different individuals. If anybody has any questions of me for now, I'd be happy to try to answer that. Anyone have any questions?
This is Commissioner Kyle. I don't have a question, but I'd like to make a suggestion that everybody that's not speaking, put their sound on mute. I'm, I'm hearing feedback, I don't know, or noise. There are two or three that, that aren't muted, it doesn't look like. Thank you.
Mayor, you had a question or comment you wanted to make before we get to the motion?
Well...
We're not hearing you, or I'm not hearing you. Does anybody?
I've got a question for Tom Hamel. Is he on there? Can you hear me now?
That's better.
Okay.
I'm on here.
Okay, Tom, I've got a question. If, if we don't feel comfortable with what we see here, what's happened and what, what we have in front of us, can we, is there a way we can ask them to maybe, to give us a little bit better clarity on what has happened, what they're doing and what they plan on doing and what they've done as far as the residents, where they've had water line breaks and so on and so forth? I mean, I've talked to some of these residents on Denine where the water line break was, not all of them, but part of them, and they've not been notified or have they had anyone knock on their door to ask them if they had any damages? And so my concern is that before we go fa, any further with this, I think that they need to get in touch with the people that, where they, they've hit water lines and such and, and make sure that they've, most everybody's got, refrigerator's got a ice maker on it, has a filter, and of course, when you have a water line break, it'll, you'll get mud in your system and, and they have to change the filter. And I, I don't really think it's, it's a homeowner's responsibility to change that. I think the, this company needs to pay for it and when they have that, because if you've got a water filtration system where you've got maybe two or three filters and maybe a membrane, then those have to be changed and from what I can tell, they've not done that, so I'm not comfortable really going much further with this.
Mr. Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
This, all this new technology is, it can be rather confusing. One of the things that we have talked about a good bit, not necessarily me with this group, but the Board of Mayor and Alderman, and, and I have been in a good bit of conversation about the, the nodes, the 11 nodes for small cell towers that were approved, and we've been examining those in the light of this Tennessee state statute that allows for and regulates heavily our ability to regulate the use of our right-of-way when it comes to approving the towers. And I think Mark kind of alluded to this a minute ago, but in, in looking at this particular application for the extension of the fiber, which is related to 5G, I went back and looked at the, at the statute because what your question really goes to, I think, is, is this particular application governed by that state statute that has all the regulations and limitations on our ability to regulate and that has the shot clock deadlines and so forth? And in looking at the statute, and I, it's a fairly complicated statute, has a lot of definitions in it, but in looking at it, it's my conclusion, and I could be, you know, somebody could point out something to me that I didn't see that might make me change my mind, but based on my review of this particular statute, I don't believe that it applies to this particular application. And that being the case, and the right, the reason I say that is because this does not involve small cell wireless facilities, which is what is specifically regulated by the state stat, the statute. This is, has to do with fiber optics, as I understand it, and those, those type of infrastructure are referred to in the statute, but they're differentiated from the small wireless facilities that are, what are the specific discussion in the statute. So the, the long and the short, that's a long way of saying that I think since this application is not governed by that statute, you can regulate or deal with this application the same way you deal with LCUB, First Utility, KUB, any other party that is wanting to use our right-of-way. In a normal circumstance, I think that it's appropriate for you to, to deal with it in that way, meaning there is no shot clock, there is no, you're not required to approve it with any particular time, you're not required to approve it at all, as far as I know. I mean, I don't know what the authority would be to say that, that this outfit, they don't pay us a franchise fee like most of the people that use the right-of-way. So if they're not governed by the act, I'm not exactly sure what state law obligates us to allow them to operate in our right-of-way. Not suggesting that we shouldn't allow them to do so. They, they're probably considered a utility, but, you know, we have so many people vying for areas within our right-of-way now with all of this new technology coming along. We've, we're just dealing with Verizon now and this outfit. We may, we may get two or three, four other carriers coming in wanting to be in the right-of-way as well. So I think we need to be fairly deliberate and careful about how we divvy out these approvals and this one, if you're not comfortable with it or you want additional information about it, then, you know, my sense of it is that if it's not governed by the statute, you're entitled to ask for and condition the approval on whatever, or you, you don't even have to approve it for that matter if you're not ready to do so. And I'm not arguing one way or the other what should be done. I'm just trying to give you the legal framework in which I think you're operating, and I think you're not operating under the statute at the moment. You're more operating under our normal way of considering and approving the location and extent of utilities that are extended into the, into the town's boundaries. Now that I've completely confused you, if you have a question, I'll try to clarify.
Well, I, can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, I mean, with, we've had mailboxes knocked down, our mailbox knocked down a fire plug. We've, they've hit water, they've hit gas, they've hit sewer, hit water a few times, and I'm not sure that they've even went around and talked to any of these people. From what I can tell, they have not, and I think they need to clean up their act with them before we go any further with this. And I, I propose we, we postpone this till, till the next meeting. I mean, I, I mean, they're, they're more, they are able to use the right-of-way, but they need to use it in the correct manner, and they need to take care of problems that they cause as they do it and not, and not just keep asking for more and not fixing stuff that they've, they've, that they've not fixed. So I, I'm, I'm not, I'm real, I think we need to look at this, have them come back next month and tell us what they've done, is who, who they've talked to and what they've taken care of, and, and then we can go again with this.
May I add, this is Vice Mayor Povlin. I would like to add a little bit to this discussion as well. Mastech is presented as the applicant, and they're not the applicant, they're the subcontractor. MCI Metro is the applicant, and they should be the one applying for this. We have a lot of questions that Mastech can't answer, that MCI more than likely could. And overall, really, the, the, if MCI can't address the concerns about the, the potential polls coming in and what energy level they'll be working at and what this, the whole picture, big picture looks like, then Verizon needs to be the applicant, but it's most assuredly not Mastech. So we need the right people in the room. And so I agree with deferment.
Vice Chairman Saint Clair, I couldn't agree more with the comments of the mayor and the vice mayor. Based on my engineering work that I've done over the years, you know, if this was a normal project, I, I could not go forward until there was a, a real plan and we were talking to the right people and had the right people involved to start getting assurances on how they're going to carry this out.
So is it okay at this point to make a motion for, to defer to next month? Is that the, what, the appropriate way to handle this? Mark?
Yep, yep, that's your all's motion, and second, then, that, that can be your motion. One of our, one of the things that we were recommending, of course, is with the newer processes is to, you know, for, by phasing these things, they have to finish a phase, and then we have to do with the post-construction inspection, make sure they've got everything fixed properly, and everybody's, you know, satisfied before we can issue a permit for the next phase. So that's one, one thing that hopefully in the future going forward, you know, will, that'll be a little bit cleaner process.
This is Vice Chairman Saint Clair. I would think that we'd look at a smaller segment, they come back and they go through and provide evidence that they've touched the bases that we're asking for. They need a pilot that they can prove that they can carry out a plan before we move any further.
This is Michael with MCI Verizon. May I speak?
Um, not yet.
Do you want a second to the motion? This is Commissioner Dick.
I don't think there's been a motion yet, but Chairman Rita?
Go ahead.
I had my hand raised, but I don't know how, if this process is working properly or not to raise our hands to speak. I don't want to talk over somebody, but I have, I'm, I'm concerned on two matters. One is, question I have is for Tom. Tom, it was my understanding in... Tom, it was my understanding in December when we approved this project to start with, that your position was that we had no choice. Now, I kind of understood you to kind of reverse your position from what it was in December, is that correct, first off?
When you say, when you say approved it in December, was, is this, is this, was it a Mastech fiber line project that we were looking at, or was it the nodes? The nodes are still...
It was the nodes.
The nodes, the nodes and the, and the small towers are governed by the act. And we're very limited in what we can do with respect to those. That's why I went through the explanation as to, it appears to me from reading the statute that this particular application is not governed by that Tennessee statute that very much limits our ability to regulate the nodes. But I think here, if it doesn't, if that statute doesn't govern this application, which my reading of the statute indicates that it doesn't, then you have more authority to regulate this. And whether, I don't remember, and we've done so many things on this thing since December. I don't remember exactly what we were considering in December. I thought that I made it pretty clear early on that when we're dealing with the small towers, that's where we have the difficulty in regulating. This is not, these are not small towers. These are fiber optic underground cables.
May I, Vice Mayor Poblen, may I correct for you, Roseanne? That meeting where Tom spoke to us was in January. In December, all we proved was a fiber project. That was a completely different, Tom wasn't at that meeting. Tom attended our January meeting where we were talking about the small cell towers.
My mistake, I was thinking it was the December meeting that Tom attended. But you're probably right, my memory may be wrong, it might have been January. Excuse me.
Don't apologize, it's complicated.
I understand, it certainly is for me, I'll tell you. Because I, you know, when you talk about the fiber installation and you talk about the 5G, I mean, it says this project will involve underground 5G fiber installation. So I'm having great difficulty differentiating between the two. What's regulated by the statute that is and what is not?
Yes, and that, that would be a problem for anybody unless you dug into the specific language of the statute and saw exactly what it was intended to cover and what it says it was not intended to cover. And it's still confusing, even then. But the way the definitions are written in that statute, I think they make a distinction there between the small cell towers and the cable that may run between those small cell towers. That's why...
Well, I guess where I don't understand is how those small cell towers could be affected without the fiber connecting the underground fiber installation. I, maybe I just don't understand the technicality enough to...
You're asking the wrong person, because I can't tell you. But the only thing I can say is that the, their antenna that transmit waves, wavelengths, I don't know whether that can happen without the connecting fiber optic cable or not.
Well, that's my question.
But the fiber optic cable isn't special. The fiber optic cable is fiber optic cable. Fiber optic cable runs, is on white speed. I assume that they need fiber optic cable to transmit whatever the, the towers are absorbing or putting out, putting information out or bringing information in. It needs a underground cable to transmit that. But that's not the only use for fiber optic cable.
Well, but this is designated in the verbiage here, the introduction, that it will be 5G fiber installation. So I assume that that was specifically for the 5G towers.
But not necessarily. Some of this, some of these towers have been 4G. That might be a staff title. I'm not sure, I haven't looked at the application itself to look at what they're saying.
Well, that's what I'm thinking, is maybe this is a misnomer, maybe the 5G shouldn't be there.
Well, it is, this Vice Chairman St. Clair, it's a fiber installation there. Back in January, I don't know if people can see this, we were dealing with nodes at the meeting. This is from our pamphlet back in, at that time. Different number of nodes with locations, specific locations. We talked about could you use the nearby pole structures in LCUB? We talked about can you move it this way, that way? We had finally discussed, and it was all centered on nodes.
I understand that. But when it says 5G fiber installation, I...
That fiber doesn't know what it's used for.
That is correct.
It's like a piece of cotton blowing through the pipe.
So perhaps the 5G should not be there, is that possible, Mark?
That is correct, it should not be there.
Well, that was the applicant talking on that, so that's...
Seems like this might be a good opportunity to listen to the applicant for a minute.
Let's get all our comments first.
I think that's my point.
I'm sorry. I think this is our opportunity to finally be able to pause and ask the questions we've wanted to ask, but have been told we can't ask. I, and I think we can take the time to defer this and have a, gather our thoughts about all of the issues that we're trying to resolve here. Because this has been very frustrating and we feel very run over. And this is an opportunity for us to pause.
At the very minimum, we've got to look at, performance to date has been miserable. And we've got to have some assurances on how we would take any step if this was just a fiber application for just the normal internet for TDS or somebody else. I mean, the performance, we would be concerned with the performance of this installation, period. Much less the broadening of it to the 5G.
So in that case, do I have a motion for postponement?
I move to postpone for a month.
A second.
And who was that, please?
Mayor Williams.
Mark, want to do a roll call, please?
We've got a motion, a second. I think we can discuss it now, can't we?
Yeah, yeah, that's right. You just need to do your discussion. The roll call will be later after, after all the items have been discussed.
Seems that the applicant needs to be given an opportunity. I think he's been waiting to speak.
Does any of the other members want to say something before we get to him? I think the chairman was going to, fixing to go around the horn.
Commissioner Dick, any questions or comments?
No.
Commissioner Russ?
Commissioner Russ, I think that Commissioner Kyle, referring to the first wave of applications that we had for fiber back in December, there was no mention of 5G in the application. It wasn't 5G fiber. And I think coming around this time it is. So I think it's just a matter of the nomenclature that's being referred to now as 5G. The way that I understand the conversation that I've heard, the difference between the two, the nodes and the fiber installation, in simpler terms, I would think of it as a razor and razor blade situation where there is fiber optic or the blade is the 5G nodes. And I, anybody can correct me if I'm wrong, those are my comments. But I look forward to hearing from the representative from MCI.
And then Commissioner Kyle, do you have anything else to add at this point?
Commissioner Kyle, no, I do not, thank you.
I have no comment.
Vice Chair St. Clair, do you have any more additional comments at this time?
No further comments at this time.
I have no further comments this time. Vice Mayor Poblen?
I have no comment, further comments at this time.
And Mayor Williams?
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Correction there, I don't think, Commissioner Russ, I don't think we have MCI here. Maybe we do, and they've just not identified themselves. But I think that we have here is Mastech. So I think that's probably who we need to hear from, unless there is an MCI person present.
I thought I'd heard them say MCI, my bad.
Yes.
That's it, that's it for me.
This is Micah with MCI Verizon.
Okay, someone was...
This is who again?
Mike Micah, MCI Verizon Business, 603 Warehouse Park Drive, Knoxville, Tennessee. I've attended most of, you know, anytime there's been any, you know, dealings with, with the work I am doing, you know, which is totally separate from the nodes or what Verizon Wireless is asking you for, like the 11 nodes and so forth. One thing I did want to say about your map here, Mark, you know, or submitted to you, is, you know, the important things on this are like map 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 72, 73, 74, which is, you know, both along Campbell Station Road. The rest of the blue areas in the residential section, I'm kind of going to pause that anyways. You know, what we want is to get it through planning, you know, because planning is just a go-ahead. You know, the actual permitting that comes after this is the next step. In our defense, you know, we feel like we've done an outstanding job. We have followed the requirement of law through the T. We have door-tagged homeowners. Unfortunately, there has been some not at fault cuts along those routes. You know, and unfortunately, that happens if the utility mismarked, I guess, or failed to mark a quarter. Sometimes they get hit. We put in a lot of effort because obviously it's costly and, you know, damaging to the public for these cuts to happen. You know, we try to avoid them at all costs, we really do. It is a responsibility, and we do restore areas to better than they were when we got there in most instances. I can give you a prime example of this along Campbell Station Road. There were some areas, when we met with some town members last week, that we did not disturb, yet we put thought in there. There was some sidewalk damage. Not that we, that we have done, just damaged over time. MCI Verizon felt this is a great opportunity to put forth some goodwill. So we repaired those 10 sidewalk pieces that were cracked over time. So we do try to do good things. And we do try to, you know, avoid all conflicts that has to do with our construction. Obviously, we're a very public company. We have a lot of big customers. We have shareholders we have to answer to, and we have municipalities we have to... So, you know, speaking back to the 5G, I mean, ultimately, you know, there's no such thing as 5G fiber. You know, we install fiber on a daily basis all over the world, and it's preparing our networks for future technologies such as 5G. And whatever may come in the future and to support our business customers and our municipalities that depend on us and power companies that depend on us. And, you know, a host of different people that depend on us to be one of the best carriers in the world.
Is that, is that all you have to say right now?
Pretty much, yes, ma'am.
Mark, where do we stand right now?
Well, we met with the applicant out on Campbell Station Road. And we were made aware of some issues with sidewalks and some areas didn't get landscaped areas that were disturbed and needed to be repaired. And on those areas that we identified with them, they did get that repaired. I had the Public Works Director and Engineering Staff go out and check that today, actually. So they did do what we asked them to do when we met with them out there last week. So on these, on these other issues, I've not been, you know, privy to some of the, you know, what they have and have not done on some of those. But certainly, I think before, you know, procedurally, before we issue any new permits, certainly, we shouldn't do that until they take care of any remaining issues that are out there. And we have that ability to withhold our additional right-of-way permits wherever they are. Or we can issue stop work orders if we have to, if these contractors on any projects aren't doing what they're supposed to be doing. So we do have leverage, you know, to get those things taken care of. So that's, you know, where we stand as far as that goes. I think we could certainly just hold them up on anything else until they, they clean up and take care of any, any issues that they still may have out there.
It sounds like, I'm sorry, this is Vice Mayor Poblen. It sounds like at the very least that the applicant, that they're pulling back from this application. So I'd want to see a revised application so I have clarity about what it is they're actually applying for to begin with. add that to the list of why we need to push this off another month.
Are we ready to vote on that yet, Mark?
Well, I do have the citizen comments that I would need to bring up here in relation to this item if we, if we don't have any other comments from the applicant or planning commissioners at this time.
Mayor Williams, no questions.
Okay, let's go on, go on to the applicant now. We have a motion and then we'll go on to the applicant. then we'll go on to the applicant and see if they have anything else to say. Who is representing them tonight? The applicant?
Uh, this is Mickey Harless. I represent MasTech here tonight.
And can you give us a, a business address, please?
2715 Byington Sawway Road, Knoxville, Tennessee.
Um, do you have anything you want to say?
I concur with, uh, what Mike Micah had said on everything. Uh, we basically represent his company, and we're the applicant only in this, in the sense that we applied for the, for the permit, but, uh, we're doing it for, uh, for MCI Metro. And, uh, we would, I would concur with what he said about recent cleanup efforts, and we stand behind what we do and continue to do so, and, uh, desire to continue working well with the town of Faragut.
Thank you. Just, uh, so we go down. Commissioner Dick, do you have any questions for the applicant?
I may not.
Commissioner Russ?
Commissioner Russ, uh, no, no further comment.
Commissioner Kyle?
Yes, I have one more question. Uh, Mark, uh, in the introduction, you say that this item's an expansion of the project that we approved in December. Now, back to that, that, I do understand the difference between the January action and the December action now. I've got that straight. And that this will not be called 5G, so we'll eliminate that designation, I think. Is that correct?
Mark?
Uh.
Eliminate the 5G for, for future.
From the earlier discussion, and it sounds to me like, based on the applicant's comments, that they, they've got some changes from what was presented, and there are some modifications to the, to the, uh, application. So it, it kind of in effect becomes a, kind of a new submittal, uh, anyway. And that's kind of the way that I would, would treat this, that the reason that if we do end up postponing action is because the application that was submitted to act on is, has been altered, and, uh, we need to, um, consider whatever provisions they're, they're making and then take action on, on essentially a new application.
Well, if we approve this motion that's on the table now for deferral till next month, isn't that in essence the same effect as a stop order? It does, this involve some of what they're involved in right now? Is the installation they're involved in right now a part of this?
No, the installation that, no, they, they're, whatever they're doing right now, they've already obtained approvals for that. The blue areas that were on this submit are the new areas that, uh, until they obtain approval for those areas, then they cannot initiate any work in those areas. They could, you know, finish up, and they need to finish up any areas, um, or any issue, or correct any issues in the red areas, I guess, on this map. Um, and they, they can certainly be working on that. It's just that if you do postpone action here because the application is, 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 you know, changing essentially, then, um, then they'll just be held up on working in the blue areas or whatever areas they end up amending in the new application that we'll consider when it comes back to you.
Okay. Then in my mind, it's not really an expansion. It's a different application, right?
Yeah, these are different applications. Yeah, that's right. It's, it's different applications.
All right. I'm clear now.
It's new areas that weren't originally looked at as part of the applications, yes.
Right. Okay. So we're not going to be stopping their work on those that we approved back in December?
Uh, right. That's right.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Commissioner Green, do you have any questions or comments? The applicant?
No.
Uh, Vice Chairman Sinclair, any more questions or comments?
No further comments. Question?
Vice, Vice Mayor Poblen?
I have nothing more.
Mayor Williams?
Uh, yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, I guess, uh, Mr. Harless, were you, were you, uh, were you on the line whenever I spoke earlier? My concerns?
Yes, sir, I was.
Okay. You understand those?
Yes.
Okay.
I've noted, I've noted some of the, uh, items that you were discussing, uh, and I will follow up with that with the construction supervisors, uh, tomorrow.
In that case, then I have nothing else.
Okay, we have a motion. Does the motion stand? Mark, do you need to read the, um, citizens' comments into the record?
Yes, I do need to do that. Um.
Madam, Madam Chairman, could I make a comment? This is Tom Hale.
Please, Tom.
I'm, I'm sitting here thinking about the, the form of the motion and some of the discussion that we've had here, and I'm a little, I'm a little bit concerned about that, that the motion may not be clear. My thought would be that if they're going to make modifications to their application and to the extent they're even taking out the reference to 5G, it's in doing some of those other things, my suggestion would be that we, rather than postpone, that we, uh, recognizing that they're going to refile, and they said they were, that we deny the applications, um, with the understanding that they plan to refile. That makes it clear for the record, kind of where the application is. It's not some sort of, well, some of it sound like they were okay with, some of it they weren't. We'll just sort of start all over again, if that makes sense.
So, um, because I made the motion, so the motion should be, um, move to deny the application, uh, for deficiencies. Um, is that simple enough to say it that way?
As noted during the discussion, yeah.
As noted during the discussion. That's my motion.
I'll second.
Oh, that's a favor. And Mark? Are we ready, ready for a roll call now? Oh, no, we still got to do the people, citizen comment.
No, we're not. Um, I'm going to have to have you go through that again on the revised motion, but I need to read these comments first. Uh, so I've got it clear. Can you state that revised motion again?
I'm going to move to, uh, to deny the request based on deficiencies that were, that became apparent during our discussion.
Got it.
Would, would you amend your motion to add, uh, deficiencies and changes?
Changes.
Change there. You know, that's something that they have brought, brought up in the discussion.
Well, deficiencies and changes, because I don't think we have the right applicant.
Correct. That's why I want the words changes in there as opposed to deficiencies.
Right, right.
Okay. Whichever one communicates best is fine by me.
Put them both in there.
That's what I'm saying, both of them.
That's what works for me. Okay.
And changes.
And Ron, um, you need a second, or Ron's second was fine?
Yeah, I've got that. I just wanted to be clear on that, that amended motion. Uh, okay, so, um, I guess I'll read through these, and then we'll take final action with the roll call vote. Uh, if that's okay with you all, that it'll take a little while to read through, through these three comments. Um, let me just start with the first one. This is from Laura Squires. She's at 236 Woodland Trace Drive. And, uh, she has a question. Will, will Faragut Municipal Planning Commission demand the entire Verizon plan for Faragut, all phases, all locations, and the total number of antenna before granting any additional approvals, and publish that map in the two local papers and/or on the town website? That was comment one. Comment two, please grant no additional approvals to any company designed to deploy fiber optic cable in Faragut until that company can deliver a thorough prevention plan to prevent further damage to existing utilities and additional inconvenience to property owners. On Friday, May 1, at about 3:30 PM, fiber optic subcontractors hit the water line in Woodland Trace, which left residents without water during a global pandemic during which the main instruction for protection is to wash one's hands. Uh, she has one other additional comment related to this item, um, kind of related to this item. What is the tree trimming slash pruning plan for impacted 5G deployment area once the towers slash antenna are installed? It is understood that the fiber optic deployment is not anticipated to result in tree trimming or pruning. Will 5G carriers only be allowed to prune trees near their actual antenna, or, or will they be allowed to prune anything in any location in or overhanging the right-of-way? I question if they will prune the entire right-of-way along each deployment area to improve their ability to transmit signal. Could this essentially result in some neighborhoods getting a crew cut to Faragut's beautiful established trees? I request Faragut Planning Commission develop an ordinance to state that no flora or foliage, down to the tiniest twig, which grows in, overhangs, or in any way exists within public right-of-way, be allowed to be cut by any utility unless it directly comes into direct physical contact with their physical equipment or imminently may fall and take down a physical line, obviously with the exception of mowing of the right-of-way by state or town employees. Lastly, uh, well, then she references a video, which obviously we don't have that. Uh, so that's one comment. The second, um, comment we had on this item is from John Hoffman, 11341 Gates Mill Drive. Um, through the Faragut Planning, Municipal Planning Commission comments pertaining to proposal from MasTech to expand residential 5G fiber installation for Verizon. This proposal was discussed at the staff developer meeting on May 5. Far too often, we heard the developer say, "I don't know," or "I'm not at liberty to say." This proposal asks you to give piecemeal approval of a major infrastructure project that is incrementally changing. This is a major infrastructure project with significant capital investment, significant impact on our town. None of us have run our businesses this way. Town expects more than this from commercial developers and other public utilities. We should not allow Verizon to operate this way. It is time to stop granting incremental approvals for this project. The Board of Mayor and Alman just passed our 2020-05 pertaining to 5G safety assurances. It is appropriate to defer approval for an expansion of the underlying infrastructure until the state of Tennessee and the appropriate federal recipients respond to it. 5G technology can be very good for commercial applications. It can also be very beneficial in many parts of East Tennessee that lack meaningful broadband access. Sweetbrier and other neighborhoods of Faragut are not lacking effective broadband access. If nothing else, COVID-19 has shown that our infrastructure works and are much higher sustained loads than were normal a few months ago. There are no commercial needs within our residential neighborhoods that require the enhanced performance of 5G. Every resident, every member of this planning commission, and every member of the Board of Mayor and Alman has questions below our mind. They are likely not exhaustive, but they provide a beginning for understanding what is proposed. I encourage you to integrate these questions with your own and defer approval for this step in implementing a residential 5G network until they are answered. First question is, why is the proposed fiber expansion required? Is this the last expansion in Sweetbrier? Uh, second question, what alternatives were considered? Third question, assuming approval, when will the expansion be initiated? Number four, how will Verizon notify residents that their representative will be working on their property? Five, what steps will be taken to avoid further damage to existing infrastructure such as gas, water, electric, sewer lines? Six, in the event of additional damage to existing infrastructure, who will compensate impacted residents? Seven, what amount of bonding insurance does MasTech hold to compensate for incurred damages? Eight, at what frequency will a fully installed 5G system be broadcasting? Nine, what is the power output for each small cell tower? Ten, what health and safety issues have been identified in that part of the energy spectrum from high-power output? Eleven, what evidence exists to demonstrate that sustained exposure to that energy is safe? Twelve, what health and safety hazards has Verizon identified during its risk analysis for towers of this type? Number, frequency of output and power output, how are those hazards mitigated? Thirteen, what power, what bodies certified this specific equipment for safe, as safe for use in residential areas? Please provide a copy. Fourteen, what is the risk of radio frequency interference, RF, RFI from this source impairing operation of nearby pacemakers, defibrillators, and other medical equipment or devices? Fifteen, are you willing to share your antenna and/or pole locations with other service providers? Sixteen, how many towers will be in Sweetbrier? Uh, seventeen, where will those towers be located? I cannot speak for every resident of these neighborhoods. However, the signs in their front yards speak for many. Until these questions can be answered, it is premature to approve this project or this piece of the larger project. John Hoffman. And the third comment, um, that the staff received by the deadline today was from, um, Catherine Sharp. She's at 716 Wood Chase Drive. Dear town of Faragut, first, I want to thank you all for your service, our great community. Please consider deferring or voting no to the request for 5G fiber installation along portions of North Campbell Station Road, Aaron Road, Cogge Creek subdivision, and portions of the Cove, Turkey Creek, Stonecrest, Sweetbrier subdivisions, and West End Avenue. MasTech contractor. This deployment of the expansion of fiber optics should cease until the public can attend meetings and have a voice. From my viewpoint, Verizon has offered empty promises to Jason Zachary in the Tennessee Utilities Subcommittee meeting, and will certainly not honor the promises made to the town and citizens of Faragut. Again, I urge the Planning Commission to defer the approval until the public can meet in person and be heard. There is no shot clock with COVID-19, so there is no reason to approve these cell towers this evening. I and others would like to have the opportunity to be heard. Thank you for your consideration. And that's, uh, that's all the letters we have from citizens on this particular agenda. Anybody has any, any comments on those?
Anybody, anybody having comments?
No comments.
I have one comment, um, just, and I addressed it with, um, Mark. I'm sorry, this is Vice Mayor Poblen. Um, with regard to our tree protection ordinance, we may want to, in light of this new technology, we may want to update our, um, just go through that tree ordinance just to make sure that, um, we're not missing something. So, um, I, I think it might be a simple amendment, but just to provide more clarity. Of course, that doesn't have to happen tonight. It's just something we probably need to look at.
Yeah. Okay. I got you. Thank you.
Here. It's Commissioner Kyle.
Okay.
It's Commissioner Kyle. Can you hear me?
I go ahead.
Uh, it was the last comment that Mark read that referenced, uh, 5G cell towers. I'm back again to this particular agenda item having nothing to do with the towers, correct?
That's correct. That's correct.
And then one of the other commenters referred again to the 5G fiber installation. I, I hopefully can get, get these two separated, uh, the two projects, the cell towers and the fiber installation. It's very confusing to me when they get mixed up. It's very confusing to me when they get mixed up. And it seems like it is to the citizens as well. Thank you.
That was what I was about to comment. It seems like this is a, something that needs to be defined better for the, for the town population. Okay, anybody else have a question or comment at this point? Then Mark.
Mayor Williams, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I think really some of the comments had to do with, with, of course, questions that MCI or MasTec or Global cannot answer. And we have not really had anybody from Verizon that could answer any of these questions. They're all good questions and Mr. Hoffman was very specific and so was Ms. Stires about what they'd like to know, but this is stuff that needs to be answered by Verizon, but they choose not to answer these questions. They choose not to send representatives that are capable of doing that. So I don't know where we can go with it any further until they decide they're going to send somebody down here to answer these type of questions.
Mr. Mayor, this is Tom Hale. As you may or may not know, I've been having conversations with some of the legal counsel for Verizon and, and as a matter of fact, in the last few days, to talk about some of the conditions that were put on the nodes, the approval of the nodes. And to be fair, the counsel asked me in a call yesterday or the day before whether we would like them to have someone with some expertise on the issue particularly of the health effects to come and make a presentation, at least that's how I interpreted what she was suggesting, about some of these issues. And so I just, I didn't want the record to be, because I hadn't really had a chance to communicate that offer to anybody since I had the conversation with her. And I told her that I would reach out to the powers that be and see if that would be of interest. And my personal opinion is, it would be very helpful, particularly if the present presenter has a thick skin, for them to come and, and have some discussion about it. Because I think that that is one of the big problems for our citizens is that they read and hear these things that say that there is danger to these things, but what they don't seem to hear is that there's a lot of data out there that suggests there's not any danger associated with this kind of radio wave at the places where these antenna would be situated. And I think we, we probably need to, to take them up on that offer and not that they're going to convince anybody, but I think it might be something that we want to consider.
Well, Tom, I agree, that is something we do need to consider. I think that we need to wait until Governor Lee takes us out of the executive order 1634 dash, or slash 34, which will be June the 30th. And for sure, at that point, we'll be able to have citizens that have these questions in the room. And of course, we'll still be social distancing and have masks, but I think at that point, those questions could be, we would like to have those people here so that our citizens can ask those questions of these people and that we can get some answers. You know, Mr. Hoffman made a, I think, made a point that during the staff developer, we had, you know, like this, they didn't know. And, and the last time we had Verizon representatives here, they didn't know. It would be good to have somebody that does know here so that the citizens can ask the questions. I mean, Mr. Hoffman had quite a few, Ms. Stires have some. There's other people that's got questions that were, probably did not get their questions in on time today. I think it was 12 o'clock deadline. There was, there was a few that came in later than that. But anyway, we, I know that we have citizens that would like to ask questions and, and they probably wouldn't need to be thick skinned, but as long as we got some answers, then I think that would, would help our citizens understand more of what's going on with these folks and what we have in front of us. I think that would be very helpful. But I do think we need to wait until after June the 30th, which is when this executive order expires. And at that point, we could have them here and we could have, we could make sure that we had, it would be probably, you know, wise to get the citizens to sit down and to work out their questions maybe together and to where they would all be ready to ask and get the answers that they're looking for. That's all I have.
I, I agree. We need to get the people who have the answers to come in and answer for us. If you can facilitate that, Tom. Mark, do you have any comment there?
Yeah, I mean, if we can get the, the people that can answer, answer the questions, all the questions, that'd be, that certainly would be useful.
So, well, of course, I have a technicality to, I don't think we're going to find anybody that's going to be able to answer the questions. We may get somebody in to discuss the questions and give their views, but I don't think there are answers to the questions at this point, especially regarding the health and safety of those 5G towers.
Thank you. Thank you. Mark, are we ready to vote on postponing?
Well, actually, you're voting, well, the motion on the floor is actually the amended motion to deny the application based on the deliberations and changes that had become apparent during the discussion this evening. So that's the motion. And I'll read out the roll call vote here on that motion, the amended motion. Commissioner Dick.
That's two to the right.
Aye is, you approved the amended motion, right?
Yep.
Commissioner Russ.
Aye.
Commissioner Kyle.
Aye.
Commissioner Green.
Aye.
Vice Chairman St. Clair.
Aye.
Chairman Holliday.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pavlin.
Aye.
Mayor Williams.
Mayor Williams.
Aye.
Okay. All right, it's unanimous by a vote of eight to zero. They've denied the application and they'll have to submit a revised one, a new one, and then we'll review that and, and bring that back to you.
Okay, thank you.
I thought I saw Commissioner Myers come in.
Brother. I have another item on the agenda. Item number four, we're ready to move on. Discussion in public, discussion in public hearing on a request for a tax amendment to Appendix A zoning, Chapter Two, definition to be defined art and fitness studio, and Chapter Three, specific district regulations, Section seventeen, Office District O dash one to modify permitted uses, Matthew McClanahan applicant.
Yeah, this item was discussed at workshop last month. The applicant actually has significantly amended their application throughout the course of the discussions with, with the staff and with the planning commission. And looking at the applicant's revised request and then kind of thinking about this a little bit more and looking at other communities and their general office zoning districts, the staff's recommendation at this time, and it's reflected in ordinance 20-06, is a pretty minor amendment to the O one zoning district. And that is to add as permitted uses barbershop, beautician, hair salon, and an art and fitness center, and then to define what an art and fitness center is. And that would be limited to a 1,500 square foot, gross square foot area for the art and fitness studio. These two uses seem to be consistent with the general description and intent that you find in the O one district. There are also uses that are frequently permitted in other communities that I looked at. In fact, the art and fitness studio definition came from the city of Knoxville for the most part. I made a couple of minor tweaks to it, but it's mostly their, their definition. And as you know, they went through a pretty robust process recently with the recode Knoxville. So they, they've probably got some good information and good experience on what uses would be appropriate for a general office. So that's pretty much the, the new uses. And then one thing we're recommending while we're at it, working at this district, is to remove as a permitted use mortuary establishments. There aren't any mortuary establishments currently in the town that are in office zoning district. And, you know, I'm looking at it, I guess it's been a use that's been there for many years, but I'm not really sure why, because it doesn't seem to be consistent with the, the intent of the office district. And it does have a pretty, you know, excessive amount of parking required that would seem to be inconsistent with the office district as well. Office district is really a district that transitions between commercial and residential or an arterial street and residential. So it's kind of a really transitional zoning district. The uses that you, you would normally see in there are pretty low impact and benefit, you know, the adjacent residents. So with that, the staff would recommend approval of resolution PC dash 20 dash 04, which recommends approval of ordinance 20 dash 06.
Do you want to start with a motion, Rita?
Yes, please.
I'm going to move to approve. Have a second.
John Green, second.
Okay, we'll start out with Commissioner Dick. Do you have any questions or comments? Commissioner Dick, do you have any questions or comments?
She's muted.
Commit, we'll skip on them and come back to.
Can you hear me on mute or unmute? Do you hear me now?
Hear you now.
Okay, mute. I have no question.
Okay, Commissioner Russ.
No comments.
Commissioner Kyle.
Where would the mortuary go? It's been deleted from here.
It's a permitted use in, in the commercial zoning, in general commercial.
Okay.
In fact, Click Funeral Home is, is zone C one, general commercial.
Okay.
That's their only one right now.
Yeah. Commissioner Green.
No comment.
Vice, Vice Chair St. Clair.
I have no recollection of how that funeral home got in there, mortuary got in there. It seemed like it's probably been in there since day one, whenever it came up. So I have no further comment.
I have no, Chairman Holliday has no comments. Vice Mayor Pavlin, do you have any questions or comments?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Mayor, Mayor Williams.
Yes. I'm glad that Commissioner St. Clair gave us some history there. How about Commissioner Dick? Can you remember, Betty, how that got in there? Was that hoping that we would get a funeral home?
I have no idea.
Okay.
When I was mainly involved, I don't think we were thinking about mortuaries at that time.
Okay. Well, then, one thing I do have on that art and fitness studio, my concern with the fitness part of it is, you know, you can go into some of the fitness locations and they're quiet. All you really hear is the machines maybe making racket, because most everybody has their earbuds on and they're listening to music. But then you go into others and it's, it's loud and you can hear it two, you know, two, two businesses down. And, and I would hate for somebody to, to maybe have one place, another one comes in that's real loud and, and then the, the one next door wouldn't be able to hear because of the, the noise. So that's my only concern about when you get into fitness studio.
May I comment? I'll respond to that.
Please.
That issue exists now. And I, I'll use my, the strip that anytime fitness is in as an example. We have our group exercise room is on the inner wall and it's connected to an accounting office. And so sometimes they hear our music and that's, I guess that's the price of going into a place and understanding, you may deal with those kinds of issues, but they exist currently in C one as well. So I'm not sure if that helps or hurts, but.
Well, this existing owner of this building is a dentist's office and if he put a fitness studio in there, it would be on him. And I'm not concerned about him, but I am concerned about someone that is an accounting office that, for instance, it's in a place and then a, a fitness studio is allowed to come in and, and then all of a sudden, he's, he can't keep two thoughts together because of the noise. So it's, I guess, I would think there's some sort of a specific noise thing needs to be in there concerning that.
Would that be a property maintenance or a property issue, not necessarily an issue for us to contend with?
It, it would probably be a, yeah, I would think it would be a property owner issue. I mean, you know, they, they shouldn't want to please their tenants, I would think. So that's one reason why we did limit that to 1,500 square feet so that we didn't have a larger, you know, facility that might potentially have more opportunity to create a nuisance, I guess. So we're trying to scale it back and keep it more almost a personal, personalized fitness.
That's a good word.
Yeah.
Anyone, is the applicant there? Do we have any?
I, I am, this is Matthew McClanahan. I am here.
We.
We can't hear you, Matthew.
Can, can, can you, can you all hear me? This is Matthew McClanahan.
Now we can. Can you give us your address, business address?
Yeah, yes, ma'am. 9700 Westland Drive, Suite 103 Knoxville, Tennessee. And I'm the attorney representing the, the owner of the property. And just want to begin by thanking Mark Shipley for all of his hard work and working with us on this application. And I want to thank the mayor, vice mayor, chairman, vice chairman, and the commissioners here this evening for their consideration of this. It means a great deal to, to my clients. And also not related to this issue, but as I listened in on your conversation, I went to law school with Mr. Hale's son, Andrew, and hold, hold Mr. Hale in the highest esteem and have a lot of respect for him. And you all, you all know this, that you have a fine city attorney in Mr. Hale. And he's, he took a very complicated issue regarding the, the 5G networks and the fiber optic cables. And, and his discussion of that was, was very good. And I, I learned something this evening from, from listening to his discussion of that. So I just wanted to commend him and again, thank the group.
Anybody have any quest, questions for applicants, representative?
None.
Commissioner Dick? Any questions? Any questions?
No questions.
Commissioner Russ?
No questions.
Commissioner Green?
No questions.
Vice Chair Sinclair?
No questions.
I have no questions. Vice Mayor Pavlin?
I have no questions. Thank you, though, Mr. McClanahan. I appreciate your kind words for Tom. We like him too.
Mayor Williams?
Uh, no ma'am. I'm good, thank you.
Okay, do we have the motion?
Vice Chairman Sinclair, I move for approval.
I think I already made a motion.
Oh, that's right.
We have a motion and a second.
How about a roll call?
So Mark?
Sorry. Is Commissioner Myers on the call now?
I think what they seen was Nick.
Yeah, okay.
Nick Myers is on the call.
I just wanted to make sure. Okay, Commissioner Dick?
No question.
Commissioner Russ?
Aye.
Commissioner Kyle?
Aye.
Commissioner Green?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Sinclair?
Aye.
Chairman Holliday?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pavlin?
Aye.
Mayor Williams?
Aye.
Okay, by a vote of eight to zero, the motion passes.
Thank you for participating tonight and the kind words from Mr. Hale.
Well, thank you all very much. And again, thank you very much for your consideration and we appreciate this. I'll let my client know and I hope you all have a good evening and happy Memorial Day.
Thank you.
Matthew, I'll send you your check tomorrow.
Item number five, discussion on a request to rezone parcel 019, tax map 162, 1013 Pharaoh, 24.85 acres, from agricultural aid to open space mixed residential R-1, OSMR, Rackley Engineering applicant. And again, this is for discussion purposes only.
All right, let me go to the, show the map here. This is, I guess, known locally as the Gibson Farm property. It's, there's one parcel south of Mcfee Park and then this parcel is just south of that parcel on the west side of Mcfee Road. It's about 25 acres. The property has, as far as its physical characteristics, it does have a major overhead utility transmission line that runs horizontally through the property. Kind of on the northern third of the property, there's about 100 and, looks like about 170 feet between the north edge of the 100-foot easement and the north property line. Then the entire property at its widest place is about 650 feet in width. So it's kind of a narrow, long, narrow piece of property. The request is to the OSMR, R1 OSMR. That's the same zoning district that the cottages at Price Farms, just northeast of this property is zoned and was developed under. That district provides for both attached and detached single-family residential. The overall density is unchanged in comparison to regular OSR. It's just that you have the opportunity to have an attached component as well as detached if you get that district. The density is, again, is based on that base zoning district, which is R1. So for this property, they would be permitted up to 54 units. And that could be a mixture of attached and detached. I guess from the applicant's perspective, as I understand it, the reason that they're requesting the OSMR is because of the 100-foot wide transmission line easement that runs through the property. The OSMR may give them a little bit more ability to cluster maybe the attached portion north of that and the detached south. The OSMR does kind of lessen the overall, potentially the overall footprint of development, because you can cluster more of the units on a smaller physical space. So that would be one of the, I guess, benefits to that. And that's really what their, I think their rationale is for that in this case, case of this property. I think kind of a larger consideration, though, you know, we had the public workshop several months ago and we engaged the community about the future of the southwestern part of the town, particularly south of Mcfee Park. And really, the predominant input that we received was they wanted it to stay residential. And everyone acknowledged kind of that this area has, you know, some physical challenges, I guess. You know, the transmission line easement is one of them. There are some sinkholes, there's some drainage. There's some drainage on this property, actually on the western part. And it actually comes through the back of the park and brass lanyard and going north. But so basically, the prescribed future land use predominantly in this part of the town is the open space cluster residential. And for that land use, the OSR, which only allows detached residential, and the OSMR, which allows a mixture of detached and attached, are the zoning districts that would be consistent with that future land use restriction. So either of those zoning districts, you know, would be consistent with the future land use map. I think really the question is, you know, looking at this corridor, you know, obviously, it's a rural area. I think you just drive through there, especially the south part of Pharaoh. It's largely undeveloped. There's some really large tracks in the area. And kind of a philosophical question is, you know, what kind of form of development do you all want to see out there? You know, the cottages gives you, gives you a look at one kind of form. You got a mixture of some attached and detached. Then you got something like Bridgemore, which is the OSR zoning district, and Sheffield, which is all detached. And they have kind of a mixture of lot sizes in those developments. So, you know, again, it's kind of a question of, you know, if you go with the OSMR, yeah, you could potentially lessen the footprint of, you know, units on the ground. But you do have a more dense form. And whether that's appropriate in this area is kind of a, is a question, you know, for you all and Board of Mayor and Alderman ultimately. Because really, the density wouldn't be affected, whether it's OSR, OSMR. It's more of a kind of a bulk consideration for this corridor and what's kind of the predominant plan of development out there, you know. And predominantly, it's single-family detached out there. And the only attached is the cottages at this time. So those are some things to think about. Some other, this is some other images. It's a little bit hard to see, but the Gibson property is outlined in red. You can see the driveway going back to the existing house. The overhead utility line easement pretty much is just north of that driveway. And it goes, again, like I said, horizontally all the way through the property. And this shows you some of the tracks out there that for the most part remain undeveloped. And there's some pretty large pieces of property. So something you need to think about is when you rezone the property out there, you know, you need to look at the district and the physical characteristics of the property and the surrounding plan of development. And because you could be setting up a certain plan of development, you know, for that general area as you approve different properties, zoning changes. So that's just something to think about. So with that, you know, I'd be happy to try to answer any questions. That's kind of an overview of what, of what is being asked at this time. This is just a workshop discussion. I know the applicant is here. Do you have any questions of the applicant? And I'll just listen and see if anybody has anything to add.
Commissioner Dick, do you have any questions?
Commissioner Dick, tell me again where the power line runs through. Did you hear me, Mark?
Yeah. If you look at this image here, if you see that kind of light colored linear feature that kind of runs parallel with the north property line, that's generally where that overhead utility line easement is situated. Because they don't have any free cover in that area. They keep that kind of out of there, because they don't want any interference with the utility lines. That's generally where it's at. Most of the property is south of the 100-foot easement. But there is, like I said earlier, about a, it looks to me like about 170 feet or so between the north edge of the easement and the north property line. Then in the back, the western part of the property, there's, you can kind of see it with the very dark line. That's where the drainage comes through the property in the very back. And it kind of comes in through at a, going in kind of a southeast direction.
Is that all, Betty? Any more questions, Betty?
Does that answer your question?
I can kind of understand how he wants detached and...
Any questions?
I guess, I know this doesn't go with the rezoning. This is just a rezoning. But how do you envision, how does the applicant envision, I guess, where the homes would go in this? I mean, it's, you said that it's 100-foot easement. Is that 100-foot easement where the power lines are? Is that what it is?
Yes, that's what it is. But Russ, if you have, are you still on it? Russ, yeah?
Yes, this is Russ Rackley, Rackley Engineering, P.O. Box 30556, Knoxville. No, there's plenty of depth from the easement limits to the northern property line for units. The road would waggle, if you will, in and out of the easement, which is allowed within the easement documents. Any ground structure that wouldn't inhibit the maintenance of the overhead power line is allowed within the easement language. So the road would wave in and out within the easement to create some interest and to avoid the pole structures, obviously. And there's plenty of depth there, given the prescribed setback requirements and periphery buffer of the OSMR zoning that we're seeking.
Okay.
That is, though, I'm sorry. If I could add, that is one of the reasons why we're seeking the OSMR instead of the OSR that we typically look for in the other four or five developments that we've done, you know, in the past, whatever, six, eight years that we've been developing out there. And to allow for the flexibility to try to get, try to maximize the property to the highest and best use so that we can keep the housing cost within a range where they are in a marketable.
Okay. I understand what Mark is getting at with the concerns of making sure that we have consistent development. But I see Price Farm is right up the road and that seems to blend in very well. In fact, they do have, it appears they have attached and detached in that development, if I'm not, if I'm correct. And I think they've done a mixture of mixing the two. And one of our goals in our land use plan is to offer different types of housing. And this is a type of housing that we don't have a lot of. And when I speak to residents that live in this attached, single-family, they're, those, they tend to sell pretty quickly and easily. So there is demand for them. The biggest issue to me, and it always is, is density. So you're staying at the same density of 2.1, maxing out at 2.178 units per acre. So to me, there's an opportunity there to explore having a different type of housing, close to a park amenity, kind of makes sense to me. And it gives you a different personality, different vibe. So I'm okay with this.
Commissioner Russ, do you have any questions?
No comments.
Commissioner Kyle? Commissioner Kyle, have any questions or comments?
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Roseanne.
No comments.
Okay, Commissioner Green?
The only comment I have is, you know, we did spend quite a bit of time walking down that area and discussing it and having public input. And this request is consistent with the conclusions that we arrived, so I have no problem.
Commissioner Sinclair?
A question for Russ. Russ, is there any consideration relative to the separation on that northern part of the parcel from the power line? Being able to get a sufficient number of houses in the stretch? I'm not familiar with the separation requirements are from those power lines, but...
Right, right. No, no, the current, the current working sketch that would be submitted, if the zoning is enacted and we submit a master plan, the sketch we're working with, of course, accounts for all the regulatory setbacks required for the zoning we're seeking in the subdivision regulations to fit the units that we want to fit in there. And so, yes, right now, schematically, it works. As we get deeper into the process, you know, that'll be discovered with more detail. But as of now, yes, there's plenty of room at 175 feet between the easement line and the property boundary. And then you account for all the 25-foot buffer, 50-foot setback on the rear and all that stuff that would be required to be forthcoming to you to review.
It takes into account the regulatory requirements for separation of distance from the power lines and the residential units.
Yes, no, absolutely.
Do we lose Russ?
That's not the zoning as much as it is regulatory to me.
Well, yeah. Russ, you... The subdivision regulations have a minimum, the, sorry. The subdivision regulations have a minimum...
Russ, you still on?
Yep, can you hear me?
That's better.
Yes. All of that will be addressed if the zoning is enacted. Of course, the zoning is not...
Anyone there? Anyone hear me?
Okay, now Commissioner Sinclair, did you have any questions, questions or comments?
Mark, did we lose our meeting?
I don't know. Can you all hear me?
I can hear you, yeah.
Okay, good, good. Thought I lost somebody.
Might have been a glitch in the internet.
Oh, yeah. Something with the internet connection or something.
I will say, Roseanne Kyle has three, she's on three different lines.
Well...
Roseanne, do you have any questions?
Listen, I, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Well, I messed up somehow. I don't know how I got off of the meeting. So I guess I'm on there two or three times, forgive me.
Do you have any questions or comments for this particular issue?
No.
Okay, Vice Mayor Pavlin, do you have any more questions or comments?
No, I'm still giggling over Roseanne. I don't have any comments, thank you.
Okay, and I don't have any questions or comments. I think you've already answered most of what I had. Mayor Williams?
Oh, yeah, Mayor, go ahead, Mayor.
I agree with Vice Mayor Pavlin and Commissioner Green. When we studied this... When we studied this, we knew that this piece of property was going to be a little bit of a challenge, but I think it's good use for it.
Let me say, we've got maybe some people that live out on the corridor. I think Alderman Burnett would like to speak to this matter. He's on the call.
Hey, thanks, Mark. Can you hear me?
I can hear you, Drew. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you for taking the feedback. So, you know, I just want to say, you know, I would encourage you to talk to more residents out here when I talk to my neighbors and as well as I can just talk for my family. You know, when we looked at moving out to the McPhee Road area, both myself and my wife love the, how rural the McPhee Road corridor was. And what we can see predominantly on McPhee Road is single-family houses with good-sized yards. And that's something we love and still love about the area. You know, to us, it feels as country as country can be while you're still in the Faragut Town Limits. And so, you know, in regards to this parcel, you know, we'd like to see the property stay single-family residential as well as my neighbors that we talked to. You know, we're not in support of rezoning the parcel to allow attached homes or duplexes. We believe that gives a very dense look and feel, which in our opinion doesn't match the look and the feel of McPhee Road outside of Price Farms being the only outlier. So another concern inside that we have is that rezoning this property to allow attached homes or duplexes, you know, can set a precedent that the adjoining property to the north, the Seal property, as well as any other undeveloped parcels around, which you've mentioned there are some very large ones, that they could ask for that same zoning and create an even higher density look and feel of homes that I believe just doesn't fit in the McPhee Road area. So I understand this corridor is growing and land will inevitably be developed, but I want it to, I want this area to retain as much and look and feel of being rural and low density as possible. And so, you know, my suggestion is that we, this parcel be zoned like a brass lantern, like a Brookmere, a Bridgemore, a Sheffield, a Sugarwood, which is either an OSR or an R2. So I know this is just a discussion item, but that's the feedback that I got. Appreciate you taking it.
Anyone else, Mark?
Can you have anyone else on the call that's out, lives out on the corridor?
Mark, can you all hear me?
Yes, I can.
Well, I got knocked off in the middle. I didn't get to, I guess, to get the finished answer from Russ earlier. Everybody kind of went mute, and I said, had the picture, but I don't think I got the full answer.
Repeat your question, Ed. Can you repeat what you didn't get the answer to?
Yeah, it was the regulatory requirements of the power line and the separation from the houses. Russ, have you looked into what would be required for that separation on that north side? Not a zoning thing, it's a regulatory, just the requirements from separation with the power line, overhead lines like that.
That, you're correct, that the subdivision regulations have minimum structure setbacks from power lines based on their, the kilovolt transmission, and I have looked at that, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you have anybody else, Mark?
I do not have anyone that has provided citizen comments other than Alderman Burnett that lives out there on the corridor.
Can I just address some of Alderman Burnett's comments, not so much to argue, because I understand what he's saying. Every lot, most of that's zoned agricultural out there, right? So if we rezone, we can certainly rezone with this, and give the reasons why we're allowing attached housing on that lot, because it's a challenging lot to begin with. But the lay of that lot is, from the road, I can't see how it's going to look like duplexes. It's tolerated at Price Farm, and I'm sure that the Price Farm people would probably say, yeah, I like that development. I would like to hear from different people, but I would love to hear from Price Farm people as well. And I understand the concern, though. We certainly need to make sure that we're staying true to, because we don't know how the other property on, what's it called, on Boyd Station is going to develop. It's kind of hard to predict how any of this is going to develop. But I would like to hear from people from Price Farm as well. So I understand the concerns, but it's also raised differently than Price Farm lays in that it's not on two major roads, well, two roads. And I'm going to close with that.
Can I jump in here? This is Russ Rackley. Can I jump in here and add a few thoughts before y'all close the bottom?
Please.
Yeah, based on Alderman Burnett's concerns, you know, density is density, and the density doesn't change with the overlay we're asking for. We're asking for this overlay for some flexibility. And in the sketches, that, which no zoning should be based on a layout, because zoning is zoning and absolute by the Board of Mayor at Alderman. But the sketches we're currently working on is predominantly single-family detached, with some single-family attached that's kind of separated in a way so that we can differentiate between the buyers, but still provide for a mix of housing at a spread of price point to be attractive to buyers who want to live in the fair community. With the proximity to the McPhee Park and with the future land use plan and the comprehensive plan showing a desire for a hub of some sort around the roundabout, population is a requirement to get some kind of neighborhood commercial or something that the comprehensive plan shows, which may or may not ever happen. But I don't see, and I agree with Vice Mayor Povlin, with Price Farms down the road, which is a very attractive subdivision, and most of the subdivisions that Alderman Burnett referenced, I designed, with the exception of a handful, that we provide a product for the community and for prospective buyers that want to be in that community that are attractive and do meet all the requirements of the town of Faragut. So we're looking for the OSMR to allow the flexibility to try to maximize the use of this property, not only for us, but for the current owner of the property and the value of the property that he's trying to sell. So I'll stop there. I know we've got another meeting to come to for the zoning and then several more meetings with concept plans and preliminary plans and design plans of all that to meet all of your regulations. So I appreciate y'all's time tonight, and we'll look forward to seeing you next month, hopefully in person.
Thank you. Mayor, did you have any questions or comments?
No, I don't. But Russ, don't get your hopes up for next month.
Okay, like I said, this is for discussion purposes only. Tonight, we'll move on to item number six, which is also for discussion purposes only. Discussion on a conceptual review of exterior building elevations in a typical street profile for the development of the Old Kroger property, 11238 Kingston Pike Site Incorporated, at.
Sorry. This is really a continuation of a review that we had last month for workshop. Basically, the applicant is, you know, continuing to do more research and submit information for us to give them some feedback. They're trying to get as much feedback as early as possible, you know, so they can, you know, adjust and not have to redo things and have any surprises as they move further into the project. This particular project, we did talk about it at the staff developer meeting on May 5. We looked at some 3D images of the north part of the development closer to Kingston Pike. Screen at the top, top of the screen is North Kingston Pike up there. And on the left, you've got Brookline Street. But one of the things that we didn't have at the staff developer meeting that is on your screen now was a concept master plan. That was something that was asked for. Obviously, this is still very, very preliminary. They're still working through many things. The flood study, they did get it completed, but now they're kind of figuring out, you know, what they can do with the property and how to do it. So just looking at this, this concept master plan, one thing just to make a note of is try not to get too caught up in the colors and all that. Somebody's getting their mic on. I don't know who it is.
It's Roseanne. Roseanne has three open ones, and some of them are open.
Okay, well, all right. So if we look at this, this concept, the upper part to that first roundabout is pretty much from there, you know, north to Kingston Pike is the commercial part. And then you've got a multifamily section south of that with a kind of an open space pool area for them, for that part of the development there, across from the roundabout at Brookline. And then you've got some out parcels along South Campbell Station Road, kind of in the lower-left part, that are not really shown developed at this time. They're just potential developments. And then they're showing at this point an assisted living facility there in the lower-right part of the property near the, near the Turkey Creek. And then they've got a lot of green space on the eastern part, which is kind of a park area, park space, trying to capitalize on Turkey Creek. And it looks like they're showing kind of a retention basin area, lake area that would be part of that park feature. So that's kind of a, just a, kind of an orientation of what they have on this master plan. Some of the things to really think about at this stage is really trying to visualize the people movement system, as I like to call it. It's your streets, your walking trails, your sidewalks, your public spaces. Trying to get all that right on the front end, and then all the rest of it will kind of hopefully fall in line. And, you know, we've talked with the applicant a little bit about this concept plan. I think they've certainly got a lot of the good elements here. They've got a lot of things that are really nice. Some things that we offered to look at with them was just trying to figure out kind of a public space that would kind of integrate the commercial and the residential and the park, public park area, together, you know, and kind of bring all that together and integrate it so that it has the effect of giving you that sense of arrival, that sense of place that creates kind of an identity for this project. We don't want it to be commercial and then very, in a very different manner, you transition to residential or multifamily. We want it to kind of have, you know, an integration. And I think key to that is kind of look at that transect area between what they're showing as commercial and residential, and trying to figure out how best to capitalize on that as a public space. And that's something that I think, you know, really, we need to have some discussions, some further discussions about that. Another thing that we pointed out to the applicant and their design team was, I think what they're showing in gray is kind of envisioned, this light gray area, are envisioned public streets, okay? So there along Brookline, there's a street shown with angled parking that basically parallels Brookline. So that's a question we had, you know, you've got kind of a street adjacent to a street, two public streets adjacent to each other. I'm sure they can speak to why that is or what their rationale for that is. And then if you look on the other side of the multifamily near the lake, they've got a really long row of parking, kind of a hardscape area interfaced with the softscape of the public park space. So trying to look at that space and get it more tied in with the residential, maybe providing some larger landscape space to break up that parking and also make that an opportunity for, you know, engaging the public park space, you know, with that. So, you know, that's just some really, you know, bird's eye view comments that we've already had with the applicant. And I'm sure, you know, you all probably have some other thoughts. And, but the main point I'm trying to make here is try to think about the physical infrastructure at this stage, the public spaces. And, you know, are they where they need to be? Are they what they need to be to create that sense of place and identity that we're trying to achieve with this project? I know the developer's trying to achieve that, too. We're all trying to work on the same thing. I don't think it's, you know, we have any different ultimate direction here that we're trying to go in. It's just how do you get to that? So with that, I'll just stop talking, and if the applicant has some comments to make, they certainly can do that. And if any commission wants to ask questions, myself or the applicant, we can do that as well. Again, they want to get as much input and feedback as they can right now. And then they'll go back and make some adjustments and present something else at a later date.
Go ahead and have the applicant speak, and then I'll go down my list of people and call on you to, planning commission, to ask questions. But let's hear the applicant first. Did you hear me?
It'd either be Bud Cullum or, I guess, Don Kendall.
This is Don Kendall. I'm not sure Bud's here. Maybe he's just got his mic unmuted. I'll be happy to take it if, in the event Bud's not available. Can you hear me?
Yes, sure.
So our intent with the, with this master plan is, it's really just a sketch concept. We're still kind of discovering what.
Can you hear me now?
There's Bud.
Okay, sorry, I was trying to unmute, and anyway. Don, you want to keep going, or you want me to take over?
You're welcome to take over if you'd like.
Okay, well, can everyone else hear me first?
I think so.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so it's Bud Cullum, 6312 Kingston Pike, Knoxville, Tennessee. Thank you for, again, having the opportunity to give your feedback. Somehow, when I was trying to unmute, I minimized the site plan, and I'm trying to get it enlarged again. But I think, I think some of the points that Mark mentioned, we did discuss yesterday. There's an area at our roundabout that we think that we can enlarge. There's an area at our roundabout that we think that we can enlarge and, and create a good flow and a mix between the commercial area, the restaurant, the patio seating, and have a, a small, almost park-like, I'm envisioning an area where people can gather, where you can have bocce ball, you can have kids, and you can transition from people coming from their residence and people coming from a restaurant or a shop, all, uh, pedestrian. And that's, that would be on both sides and all around that roundabout area. I think the, to address, uh, at a, at a high level, the road system, uh, thi- this, this came up from, from our architect, Bob Koch, who by the way, has a lot of experience with designing town centers. And one of the thoughts was that we have an arterial type road with Kingston Pike and we have Brooklawn. And Brooklawn, our thought was still kind of feels, maybe not an arterial, but a collector. And we wanted to, to try to create a town center grid, if you will, and not just for the commercial, but for the entire development. So the feeling was that by coming off of, of Brooklawn with more of a true urban street feel and on the west side and then with the same type of a, of a public type urban street on the east side, that on the east side, that would be truly a way for public parking to access the, the plan for a public park. Now, I will admit on this plan, you see a lot of green and blue. And that area where the green and blue is, it, we're not saying that's how the park would look. We're not saying that that strip of parking would have no more landscaping to the east side of that. We just haven't gotten to the point of, of getting input and, and truly laying out, knowing exactly how much space we need for the retention area and, and exactly how to lay the park out. But the idea would be that to get a true urban feel set aside from Kingston Pike and set aside from Brooklawn, that we don't necessarily, although it, it's a great street, we still don't feel like it is a street where we want to put the retail or the housing right on the street. We need, we feel like it would be better to take everything and create an urban grid. And, and then that way we can tie the commercial and the housing together and then flow from the small park around the roundabout to the larger, more public, if you will, what we typically think of as a public park to the rear. I think Bob Koch is on, he could probably give you more, uh, details. But as, as a, as an overview, that's our goal. And, and, and he can probably show you examples, may not be able to tonight, but as we get further into this, show you examples where we think that in the end, this will create the feel that everyone, that everyone is after more so than if we just set buildings directly upon Brooklawn. I'll, I'll stop and field questions.
Let's go down the road now and then we'll start with Commissioner Dick. And you want to, do you have any questions you want to ask, Betty?
No questions, but I like what I'm hearing and seeing.
Thank you, Commissioner Russ.
Yeah, I, I agree. I, I really like what I'm seeing in all stuff of Mark in the packet. You included a, a link to an interactive 3D rendering and that was, that was very helpful for me to get a, you know, good visual of it too. And in case anybody else had any trouble opening that up, um, I, I was unable to open it up with Internet Explorer, but, um, in Google Chrome or Firefox it popped right open. So, and, and thank you for providing that.
Commissioner Cal?
No comment.
Commissioner Green?
Uh, with no urban planning experience, this is an education for me rather than, uh, for time for me to comment. It looks really great to me. Thank you.
Vice Chairman Sinclair?
I like the way the plan's evolving, recognize it's still a work in progress, but, uh, you know, when we were looking at the renderings on the north side as we came off Kingston Pike and down before, we came to the roundabout, there was that curvilinear building with a pass through. And now it's kind of evolved to what a squared up building, east, west.
And, and that, that building still has a pass through, but it's not envisioned for the vehicular pass through. It's, it's, it's in an effort to have the, that street grid go either way to the outside. And then as you've got that, what I will call the small pocket park around that roundabout, uh, be more, be more park-like and pedestrian oriented and, but there still will be a wide pedestrian passageway to that breezeway area.
Okay. I hadn't heard any further comments. I like the way it's evolving.
And Rita Holliday here. My, in going to the property and, um, driving around it, my concern is mainly the predominant, a large percent of the property is going to apartments, uh, not as much retail as I was hoping for. I realize this is a hard time for retail. It was even before, but even more so maybe now. Hopefully that's going to open up a little bit, but I'm concerned about the, um, lack of retail, uh, especially in comparison with the number of apartments.
Vice Mayor Problem, do you have any questions or comments?
Well, I would remind you that there's a bunch of retail right across the street that would fit from this, um, residential aspect, um, I'm thinking specifically the Admiral Pub and the French Grapery, which I, I know that French Grapery is, is, um, sometimes has a tough time. So, um, there, there is that there. I wonder, I, I know that this is a residential plus commercial area plus public access. And I'm just curious, I'm throwing it out there as a, um, an idea to under, to understand where you guys are coming from. What if we had no parking minimums? Would that look, would that make this look different? Or is the, the parking there is because you're considering the fact that there's going to be some public access as well?
The, uh, to, to try to answer that question, uh, the parking we are showing, we are showing parking along the, what I will call the, the public park, where you see that boo- blue and the green. That area is additional parking that would not necessarily be required for the multifamily. But for the most part, the parking that we are showing is, is the minimum needed, not from a, from necessarily, forget, forget about what the municipal code or your planning code would be. It would be the minimum needed from a, uh, from an actual use standpoint.
Okay, I, I'm just, over the years, I've, I've grown to hate parking lots and...
And I, I agree with you. And, and what, i- if I, if I can to the previous commissioner's comments, uh, yes, you know, when, when you look at the linear feet of the commercial versus the linear feet of the multifamily, obviously it, it is what it is. I think it's more of our reason to have this where we're shown in gray almost layout more like a urban street grid is that when you're coming down, even if you're on Brooklawn and you're looking over, our goal is to make it feel like you're looking over at an old fashioned, what was the original downtown. And as you drive all along the street with the angled parking that parallels Brooklawn, it may be residential, but it almost still feels from a structure standpoint that you're, you're in the town. So that it's not necessarily, you're not driving down a curvy, windy, what we think of as a suburban street. And it's obvious you've got a shopping center on one end and you've got a garden apartment complex on the other end. Our goal is that all of these structures, although they may be different uses, still has the feel of being originally built in an urban street grid. And some of them are commercial, some of them are retail, some of them are restaurants, some of them are professional offices and some of them are multifamily residences.
And, but I appreciate that because we're, that's, um, whatever we do on, um, whatever happens or in the future on, um, the Ford property, that's certainly what we're looking for is a grid-like, uh, uh, infrastructure that, um, gives that vibe and that feel of, um, a more of an urban town feel. Of course, I don't know what's going to go there or if anything will ever go there, but, uh, this kind of sets the tone for, uh, what we'd, uh, want to see there as well. I, 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 like Mark, I'm, I'm struggling a little bit with the road next to the road. So, um, I, I guess I would need a little bit more convincing that, um, and maybe a streetscape of that would help me, envision that better.
I think our plan would be to get, uh, not only a streetscape, uh, rendering, but even some pictures of some real life examples. And then maybe get back with the staff and, and let our architect, Bob Koch, who has designed a number of these and has, ha- ha- has really, really studied patterns and, and consumer and behavior and, and these things and applied it back to the urban environment. And, and when you can have the opportunity to sit and listen to him, show these examples and show his experience and show the research he's done, uh, sometimes all of a sudden you realize that this plan view that you're looking at right now from an overhead that may look a little long and linear, uh, he can show you from a street view as if you were driving down Brooklawn or if you were driving down what we're proposing as these new urban streets, or even better yet, walking down those streets, how this really will, uh, come to life, if you will, and be a better product than if you tried to just jam buildings right up along, uh, Brooklawn.
And, and I don't, and I don't disagree with what you're saying because I can't imagine if, um, living in an apartment, I'd really want to live in an apartment that's right on Brooklawn. I mean, there's, it's, it's an access road to a, a tri- typical suburban, um, commercial development. And that's what we're trying to get away from.
That's, that's our, that's our whole feeling. Our, our whole feeling is nothing against what happened 10 years ago. And Brooklawn's a, a great street from one hand, but our feeling is that our, our more town center resident does not want to be looking right at Brooklawn and the vast expanse of the Kroger parking lot.
Yes.
And Bob, Bob, Bob will be able to show visually how this will create a much better feel.
And I, and I appreciate that because that's kind of where I've done a little, certainly not, I've done a lot of reading on pedestrian friendliness and, and, uh, what we're trying to create and what to do and what not to do. And, and we have the typical suburban car-centric community, which is what suburbs are about. But we are looking to, at least in these last final large parcels, to create some walkability. And to create walkability, to create, uh, a, uh, an area where we want pedestrians, you need residents and you need quite a few residents to really bring in that activity. And if you want to bring in those niche, uh, one-off restaurants, you're going to need the residents there to, to make that a, um, a place that people want to be. And people who don't live there are going to want to be there. They're going to park their car and walk around and, and, um, and hopefully that inspires the remaining areas, if we can tie them in well enough, to have more residential, um, maybe not in an apartment style, but, um, single family attached in some areas. And, and maybe, uh, I, it's something we need to look at is our, our zoning, um, ordinances to add in a medium density, very small lot, single family, uh, more of the urban style that we see. There's, there's a lot of potential down here. So obviously, like I've said all along, this is, this is key to getting this right and making sure that we're getting pedestrians in there, but we're providing a, and a atmosphere that people actually want to walk in. Because we're not very good at doing that in the suburban, ti- typical suburban design. So I, I appreciate your efforts and, and, and look forward to seeing, um, a, a, a vision of that from, because it's hard to see from a plan view. So, and those were my comments.
This is John Green. Uh, I'd like to follow up. Rita, you talked about the shortage of commercial property. I noticed that at the bottom of this plan, one, the, the land strip that goes along South Campbell Station, there's a note that says, "Future development parcels for commercial occupancy." So it looks like at least conceptually, there's a potential for businesses along there. Does that sound right?
That is correct, yes. And, and just in fairness, some of that property is, is going to be retained, at least initially, by the Biddle family. Uh, we, we are under contract on, on everything that is shown as being developed, including where we would do the park area. But they insisted on retaining some areas out there, uh, you know, whether, you know, our goal would be that we can do something similar to what you're looking at and it will be successful and we'll continue on and purchase more property from the Biddles. And, but, but my thought would be that some of that could potentially be more along the lines of professional office condominium type. I know a lot of, there's a lot of professional people, whether it be an orthodontist or a dentist or a lawyer, uh, who, who prefers having someone do the development part, but at the end of the day, they'd like to own the actual real property. Uh, I'm not saying that's what it has to be, but that's one thought we've had.
Mayor, you have any questions or comments?
Comments, uh, no questions, but, um, comments. A few years ago, um, had the opportunity to, uh, participate in National League, uh, National League of Cities, uh, workshop in, in Charlotte, North Carolina. I actually participated in a couple of them over there, but, uh, we looked at something like this where, uh, you, you actually linked other retail, uh, such as the Kroger, uh, the whole Kroger strand there, uh, on both ends. And then of course, the west end across, uh, Kingston Pike. You linked it together, uh, to where you actually kind of put a, more of a, uh, an urban in suburbia, uh, by this type of a, a design. And it, and it took the apartments to, uh, or brownstones in, in the case that we were looking at to, uh, to actually put the residents, enough residents in there to make something like this work properly. And, uh, so I, I think really, uh, the amount of retail we've got there, uh, if with Bud's connections, uh, and, and his group's connections, I, I think we'll have some, uh, some good people in there and, uh, it's going to draw the people in. And it'll be a, a walkable, bicycable, uh, area. My concern would be that we make sure that we've linked this together with, uh, with sidewalks and walking trails, um, all across the property. That, that'd be, uh, that was something that we actually worked on in that workshop was, was to make sure that we did have a, uh, a user-friendly, uh, town center. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions or comments at this point?
Can I make just one more, um, comment? And maybe it's just a personal, um, thing for me. I'm not, I'm not a fan of the proposed assisted living development. I don't know how big that area is. I would love to see some opportunity for home ownership on this if, uh, but I don't know how big that is. I don't even know if that's feasible. I know it's nice to dream, but that doesn't mean that it's something you can do. Given, given the location of that, um, but it, could it be medium density? If we had appropriate zoning ordinance that would, um, allow for that? I'm just, uh, I'm just thinking outside the box here, but that was the only other comment I had.
Thank you. And Mark, do you have anything else?
Uh, no, I don't have anything else.
No, I don't have anything else this time.
If nobody else has anything, we thank you for coming tonight and we look forward to seeing what else you're going to bring us in the future.
We thank you very much and we look forward to being before you again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bud.
We'll move on to item number seven, discussion on a conceptual review of a site plan for 1336 and 13038 Kingston Pike, two acres zone C dash one MBH Incorporated applicant. This also is for discussion purposes only.
Let me get to the page here real quick. So what what this item involves is just a request from the applicant to get some very early feedback on kind of a concept site plan. What you're seeing there on the screen, you're showing two small retail office buildings that would be on the south side of Kingston Pike, just to the east of Dixie Lee Liquor Store and just north of the icearium. They are showing an access to the Dixie Lee Liquor property and to the icearium. And and then they're showing a a full access on the Kingston Pike that would roughly line up with a flag lot that I think the applicants own on the other side of Kingston Pike. With the idea that that there would be an access there and the properties that above that flag lot would access the same would come out at the same access point across from their proposed access with this project. We talked a little bit about this at the staff developer meeting on May 5. Some of the things that we talked about was one was the full access request on the Kingston Pike. It does not meet the the distance separation between driveways on Arterial Street. And, you know, as presented would require a variance. Another thing that we that we talked about was just the, you know, coordinating what they're doing there with what TDOT is going to be doing down at the Kingston Pike Watt Road intersection and making sure and then with the Dixie Lee Liquor property as well. You know, the access to Dixie Lee Liquor currently there on the northwest part of their building is going to be going away. You're going to be coming in back there at the the south location where it's roughly shown on this concept drawing and then just tying that in with what they're doing on this this property. And a third thing that we talked about was just providing for, you know, not precluding at least the opportunity to have a a cross parcel connection to the east when that property develops. There is currently a very severe topographic difference between the properties. But the the idea is, you know, if they do develop this project to at least set it up for not precluding a connection in the future. So as part of that, you know, they're showing their dumpster enclosure area there right now. And that would be where the connection would continue on through the east if that property ever, you know, is developed. And then just figuring out a a second location for that dumpster pad in the event that that does get extended. Anybody that develops the property to the east is going to be likely bringing in a lot of fill. The property does, you know, slope downward from Kingston Pike. And it has some, you know, topographic challenges as well. And so there may be an opportunity for that parcel to also connect into the icearium project there in the the eastern part of their their parking lot as well. So just trying to get as many opportunities to, you know, get in and out of areas. It's something that's actually a requirement in our zoning ordinance and our subdivision regulations now. You know, from a staff's perspective, and, you know, we certainly talked with the town engineer about this. You know, all that we could really support on Kingston Pike would be a right in, right out. We certainly understand the applicant request. And, you know, if if it, you know, it's really ultimately up to the planning commission and board of mayor and alderman as to whether you're comfortable with that. But we feel that, you know, you're close enough to to the Watt Road intersection that if you were going west, that you would just go, you know, through the the rear portion of the access through Dixie Lee Liquor too to signalize a condition there that you have at Watt Road and Kingston Pike. The right in, right out is just gives it a little bit of a, you know, a safer movement there that close to the intersection. So that's really kind of the the big ticket items, I guess, that we talked about. I think it would be a good project for the area. But I think the the applicant wants to get your all's input and feedback on these issues and or if you have any others that you want to bring up and discuss. I think another thing, and just kind of looking at this layout, just making sure that we get our pedestrian connections to all these abutting properties as well. You know, getting a sidewalk down to the icearium, you know, and those kind of things to 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 get people, you know, to give people as many ways to get through these properties in in various modes while we're while we're looking at that. So with that, I I will answer anybody's questions. I think the applicant is is here. Okay, they can maybe talk through what they're they're asking for and and get your all's input.
Yes, let's go to the applicant and hear their plans and then we'll go down the row and ask questions.
I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. I am Nick Myers, address 12748 Kingston Pike. Probably the biggest thing I want to talk about or get your in your input on is the full access that we would be asking for on Kingston Kingston Pike. I think it's really important to kind of back up and look at where we started. There are currently two separate lots, each lot is an acre. And then there's a 50 foot access for the icearium that is they they own it that gives them access directly on Kingston Pike. And so what we're doing is we're taking the potential of three access points and combining them into one. And so in a perfect world, you would have your 400 feet of separation. But as you all know, you know, we are dealing with the kind of the remnants of properties. And what we're trying to do is make the best case scenario that we can with what we what we have. The thing that Mark talked a little bit about the dumpster, we don't have a problem. We do have a alternate location that we would, in the event that the property to the east of us was developed at some point in time, that we could relocate relocate a dumpster. If any of y'all were part of the a workshop that we had, it's my hope that when that day comes, we don't have the need for a dumpster. There's alternatives because I personally don't like dumpster pads at all. They create a lot of issues, don't have anything to do with, you know, the municipality, but they definitely do with the tenants and the owners of the buildings. The cross connection that we've shown to the west through Dixie Lee Liquor is obviously a is a I'm sure you all are remember that that's not that what they have behind there is not built yet. It sounds like that it's something that's going to happen fairly soon. Obviously, we would hope that that's in place by the time we would get to the point where we were opened up. But at this point, I'd be happy to open up for any kind of questions y'all have.
Let's start with Commissioner Dick.
It looks like the wall there is not going to be walks on Kingston Pike, right? Sidewalks?
I'm sorry, Betty. What was the what was the question?
Will there be sidewalks on Kingston Pike? It looks like there will not be.
No, there will be. Yeah, we have we have sidewalks. Yeah, we have sidewalks that cross connect. One that we didn't show, but we've already talked to Mark about it. It came up during a during the workshop is that we want to show we want to put a sidewalk going to the icearium. There is a culvert that is in place today. And we just don't know for sure if the culvert that is there will give us the size of it would give us the give us the width to build the road or the drive the driveway and a and a sidewalk. Although, obviously, if, you know, we go to the next the next step and we engineer us engineer the site plan, that is in information that we would have. Obviously, if we can do it, that's we we have every intent. We we think there we think the cross connections for pedestrians and for vehicles are very, very important.
Commissioner Rush, do you have any questions, comments?
I don't have any comments at this time. Thank you.
Commissioner Kyle. Commissioner Kyle. Let's go on to Commissioner Green.
Yeah, I have no comments. Thank you.
I'm back. Okay, Roseanne, do you have any questions or comments?
I I was wondering if the concept thus far was whether these would be multi story buildings or one level.
At this point, we think they would be s- single story.
Any other questions, Roseanne? Did I ask Commissioner Green? And you had no comments? Go ahead, Commissioner Green.
I had no comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Vice Chairman Sinclair.
Well, I had most of my comments and discussion back at the staff developer meetings answered. And I I do like the idea of the deceleration lane and the right turn in. But I really don't like I only want to see a right turn in, right turn out. And hopefully you get the traffic coming out the back to come around to the signal at the major intersection. I just I'm really worried about that proximity to the major intersection for a right or a left turn out. Any other comments?
Okay. My question is, does each one of these lots, do you just anticipate the one building? Or do will there be more than one building eventually on them?
I think I understand what you're asking is that there would just we would just have one building on each of the each of lot as is proposed.
Okay.
I think that's what you.
That that was my question. That was my question. Vice Mayor Pavlin.
Nick, can you just I I'm sorry, I was listening, but trying to figure out what you were talking about. Did you say that there's envisioned a sidewalk extending from the icearium? But I know you said that there's a culvert there. What does that mean?
Well, there is a so the when we talked about this during the workshop a couple a couple of weeks back, this came up. We know there's a culvert culvert there. We don't know we don't know the width of it. Our agreement, if you will, not that has anything to do with the municipality, but with the owner of the icearium. You know, is that we're going to connect their parking parking lot through basically all the way through to Kingston Kingston Pike. If the culvert that is there is sufficient in width, then it's, you know, then we're more than happy to add a si- a sidewalk. If that culvert is not sufficient, it's a pretty big deal. It you just you just can't go into a creek and add a culvert on. It's a it's a it's a it's it is very expensive. And so we just don't know at this time if it if the size is sufficient to accommodate both the drive aisles and the sidewalk. We think it is. I just don't want to tell you that, yes, this is something we're going to do. And then I can't. Kind of the purpose of tonight is, you know, to get some guidance. And if you all say that, you know, you can only have a right in, right out, we're not going to prove any anything else. Well, that kind of tells us this is this is not a project that's going to work for us. Because it just we can't. Our tenants don't want that. And we just can't develop it. And so then we're not going to inch near the site. If the feedback it tells me you give me says that, you know, we like what you're going, we like these things, then we're going to go ahead to the next step, one of them being is having a full a full access point. Remember that right now, somebody could come in and develop one of those lots on their own. The icearium could put their access point in. And so you'd have you could you could technically have three right in, right outs. And, you know, what we're proposing is, we don't think that's a good plan. But what we're proposing is to not have three right in, right outs, but to have one single full access point.
That makes sense. I I understand what you're saying. Well, you already have a full access point over there by Dixie Lee. And I'm there quite often. It doesn't seem to be a problem. Of course, I don't know how many people pull out of that and go left. That that acts that access point right there by Watt Road is I guess you would go out if you were going to go that way is is a that's a difficult place. So I'm curious to see what happens when when Watt Road finally do have more hopeful thinking than I do at this point. I'm wondering how much longer it's going to take to get that project done. But I understand what you're saying. What's the distance between those two access points, between the one at Dixie Lee and that one?
Louise, I don't have that number.
Well, it looks about the same as what is at between Dixie Lee and Watt Road. It looks very.
Slightly more. I mean, it but it's it's close. I mean, my my guess, it's about 250 feet, but I'm just I'm taking a guess there.
And you're going to have an access point across the street.
Yes. Right, so we have, I think, three and a half acres across the street. And the we don't have any plans for that today. We have we have thought about just about everything under the sun. None none of which we really, really get excited about. But yes, that is where the access point that's the only access point for that property is right there. And so, you know, it made sense to line ours up with what we have across the across the street. We don't own either the properties that are adjacent to our to our access point across the street. So we don't have any controls of, you know, what those owners are going to do or when they're going to develop. owners are going to do, or when they're going to develop, or if they're going to develop. Um, we just don't know.
Okay.
Now, that was, this is Mark. That was one of the comments we mentioned in the report, was, you know, just kind of think about the access on the north side as well, because you kind of, you're kind of prescribing it to be at the flag lot, which is not necessarily a problem, but there are, there is going to have to be some coordination with the property owners that abut that flag lot, because they'll have to access at that point as well. They won't be able to get a separate access point. Um, so, so, you know, like Nick said, it's hard to predict the future, so, but it is, you know, you need to think about that with the access, um, and what it could mean for the larger area and not just this particular development at this time.
Mayor, do you have any questions or comments?
Yes. Uh, normally, I'm, I'm not a fan of, of, uh, of short distances between entrances. I, I like our spacing, normal spacing that we have, but in this case, uh, when I look at the, uh, at those two lots and then look across the street and, and just what Mark described, and, and, and of course, no crystal ball, but, but what you do have there is what's going to be a necessity, uh, at some point in time. And, uh, I think if you look at the safety of that, if it was a uh, an open entrance and exit instead of right-in, right-out, um, I think it's a safer entrance than the one at Dixie Lee, which is, does have a left-out uh, at that point. I think it's safer there because it is farther away from the, uh, the, uh, intersection, and it's also farther away from the, uh, the gas station uh, lot right there, which is a, a right-in, left-out. Uh, I mean, it's, it's an open entrance as well. Um, most of the time, when you see people come out of there, uh, that one there, they stage in the center lane and then go on uh, as traffic allows. So I think you're going to probably see that same thing happening with these two lots, that if they come out, you know, they would stage in the center and then move over into the lane to head west. So, uh, I kind of think that, uh, this is one of those that, uh, we, we need to seriously look at as far as allowing that because of the flag lot and because of what we see elsewhere, knowing that eventually all of it will develop. I mean, we're, we're basically running out of land. And, uh, it, it will be developed eventually. I, I'm not, uh, I don't really know about that lot to the east uh, with the topo challenges of it, but, uh, I don't know how that would ever connect into Nick's lot there, but, uh, uh, stranger things have happened. But, uh, again, I, I would support, uh, the, a open right-in, left-out right there because of the, what we've described as across the street and what, what you potentially have over there. And the fact that if these were separate lots, you would have a lot of separate entrances and, and, uh, we're trying to cut that, cut down on that on Kingston Pike if we can, if it's at all possible. So, that's all I have.
Thank you, Nick. Anybody else got any more questions or comments at this point? In that case, thank you, Nick, and we appreciate your coming tonight.
Appreciate your time. I appreciate it tonight. Thank you.
So we'll move on to item number, item number eight. Again, this is for discussion purposes only, discussion on the development of zoning provisions governing the pain clinics, pain management clinics and methadone treatment and similar drug and alcohol treatment clinics facility. Town Affair get applicant.
Uh, yeah, let's see here. Okay. Uh, basically, on this item, you know, we, we talked about it at the workshop last month. Um, and we talked about the fact that pain management clinics and drug treatment clinics are really two kind of different things, and they're treated differently in the state um, regulatory environment. They're really governed by different entities. And we also talked about the fact that in our current zoning ordinance, these, these type of uses, uh, would probably loosely fall under the medical, dental, veterinary facilities use, and that's allowed in office and commercial zoning districts throughout the town. Uh, so what we talked about with the Board of Mayor and Alvin back in March, and a little bit at the planning commission meeting last month, was the need, um, to develop some parameters, I guess, uh, for these type of uses. Um, and, um, you know, some of the things that, the feedback that we received from the planning commission last month was um, the need to, you know, emphasize counseling, you know, in the definition of drug treatment facilities, um, and to, um, you know, provide some provisions that would separate these type uses from um, uses where there may be children that typically congregate, uh, like schools or daycare facilities. And then we also got some feedback to, you know, limit these type of uses to the regional commercial area. Um, we would also propose to include the O-1-3, the three-story office and five-story office zoning districts, only because there, there's not many of those properties. Um, they're actually already developed. And they are in the Parkside Drive area where C-2 is the predominant zoning district. Um, so what we put together, uh, mostly is on the screen. Um, and I can talk through a little bit of this. Uh, we are providing for a definition. This is just kind of a draft ordinance. It's, you know, obviously not in the final form. Uh, but we, we wanted to define the drug treatment clinic and pain management clinic, but while we're at it, we also need to provide a definition for a medical, dental, veterinary clinic. Uh, we don't really currently, obviously, have that. Um, and one thing that I added to that definition um, is the last sentence, uh, of the medical dental facility, uh, term there, and that is that this term shall not include drug treatment or pain management clinics or facilities as defined herein. That way, it's real clear that all three of those uses are separated. Uh, and that if you are proposing a drug treatment clinic or pain management clinic, that, um, you know, it would have to fall within the way we define it, uh, in this community. We did take out the, uh, uh, dispensing of prescriptions onsite. That was something that we talked about last month. Um, and, um, and mostly the definitions that, that we have for the drug treatment and pain management clinic came from uh, mostly Knox County, and they actually spent a fair amount of time uh, developing provisions dealing with these kind of uses. So we we felt like they had some good parameters in place, um, and, you know, would be something that worth, worthwhile to follow for the most part. Uh, and then, you know, out of the definition section, then we go to the, um, district sections, C-2, O-1-3, and O-1-5, and we provide for these uses. Uh, but then they are subject to development criteria, kind of like a USON review in a way. Basically, they have to demonstrate that they, these provisions can meet A through E there that are on the screen. And those deal with basically providing for, you know, verification of license, certificate of need if appropriate. Uh, and some written documentation, uh, that, to the Knox County Sheriff's Department on the operations itself. Um, we did provide a use restriction zone of 1,000 feet, and I'll show you that map here in a minute uh, from schools and daycare facilities in this area, uh, near the interstate where this use might be an option. Uh, there's a parking provision, and that again was five per thousand. That was taken out of Knox County's um, ordinance. And then we also added the language that the facility shall see patients by appointment only. Um, not sure how we really enforce that, other than potentially the Sheriff's Department had to get involved. Uh, but it does put some provisions in place that, you know, uh, we could fall back on if we needed to. As I mentioned, the, the use restriction area, um, we, we no longer need to show the whole town since the direction we received was to only provide for these uses in the C-2 area in general. So we've got three facilities of childcare in that general area, the primary school and a couple of daycare childcare facilities. And that green area is a thousand-foot zone uh, from those property lines within which these uses would not be permitted. Um, everything outside of those in red or blue, uh, it could potentially be a permitted use if they can, again, demonstrate that they would comply with those development criteria. So that's kind of what we're proposing at this point. We wanted to get some final feedback, uh, from you all before we put it in a, in an ordinance format, but, you know, it currently, we really don't have any provisions in place, so, um, you know, what we're trying to do is, is put those in place. Uh, we're not zoning these uses out. There's still plenty of land where someone could have a, either of those uses, uh, should they choose to do so. Uh, so that's kind of an overview of where we're at, and if you, if you all have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer those.
Okay, we'll start out with Commissioner Dick. Do you have any questions or comments? Betty, do you have any questions or comments?
Can you hear me?
Now we can.
Okay. Um, I echo everything that Noah said at the last meeting. Um, I would also like to add, people attending a methadone clinic become addicted to the methadone. Uh, and many times, they add in the original drug. So it, I know it gives me great pain to even discuss these pain clinics. Um, I have some personal, personal and professional background relationships that really were not helped by these things. My question is, has the Tennessee Department of Health been notified that there's probably a pill mill operating in the Town Affair right now? Did anybody hear that?
I, I have not, I don't know anything about it, no.
Well, just a side comment I heard. I don't know anything, but it's something that I had heard. Uh, and I think leaving it in the C-zone, two-zone is the place for it to be. And I really wonder about putting it in, um, multi-story buildings because of one of the things that Noah mentioned at the last meeting. Uh, they lost tenant, tenants because of the clientele at these places. Now, you make appointments, but it's pretty easy to lose control when you have a bunch of drug addicts coming in and out of your facility. Uh, this gives me great pain to even discuss pain treatment and, uh, drug addiction. I don't have a problem with counseling. I think counseling is good. But to put in dispensing of drugs bothers me greatly. And, uh, did you answer my question about has the Tennessee Department of Health been notified that we may have a problem? Or you said you didn't know?
Yeah, I have no idea. I don't, I didn't know we had one.
Well, I just, just heard a false side comment that we did have one. Okay, that's all.
Okay, Commissioner Rush, do you have a question or comment?
Um, no, I just echo Commissioner Dick's comments. You know, I think Noah really made some great points, um, you know, when it was workshop or at the last meeting. And, um, no, I don't have anything additional to add. Thank you.
Commissioner Kyle?
No comments?
Commissioner Green?
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment. Uh, Mark, I, I think you and your staff have done a really good job of trying to walk the line between compassion and trying to protect our community from abuses of that compassion. I know you've done a lot of work on this, and what you've put together here seems to be like a reasonable path for us to follow. Thank you for all the hard work that you did.
Yeah, I think Trevor and Bart did most of the work. I'm just presenting it, so, but thank you.
That's a good comment. Vice Chair Sinclair, do you have a question or comment?
Uh, I can echo what John just said. I think we're in a, you know, damned if you do, damned if you don't between, you know, compassion and what, and actually control. And so I'd like to try and make the best of that situation. I think the staff's done an excellent job in getting us to that point.
And, uh, I have no questions or comments at this time. Vice Mayor Pavlin?
I have concerns about including them in, um, oh, the office district, three stories and five stories, because those have a common entrance and a shared entrance for, uh, all of the, um, offices in there, and, uh, I'm just a little concerned about, um, the potential mess we could be creating by allowing them in there. Um, I think that they probably should have their own street entrance. That you will, you would find in a, a strip mall. So that's my only concern about the, the office district inclusion in that.
Mayor Williams?
Uh, yes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, I agree with Vice Mayor Pavlin. Uh, we need, they do need to have a separate entrance. Um, when it's a, a common entrance like that, uh, I think you would, uh, you would have, uh, you would have issues. Um, whether how many stories it is or not, they, they do need to have their own, their own, uh, their own entrance. And I, I think if that's a requirement, then you, it'll police itself. That's all I have.
We're giving you enough feedback there, Mark.
So do you, do you want us to take the O-1-3 and O-1-5 out of that? Is that what I'm hearing? Just leave it to the C-2?
Yes.
That's, that's what I would support, yes.
Okay.
I do.
Okay, that's fine.
This is, uh, Trevor Hobbs. I just had a follow-up question. Is it necessary that we add a separate in the, um, separate entrance as a, as a requirement? Or do you think we're doing that by taking it out of the office districts?
I think if, uh, Trevor, it's Vice Mayor Pavlin, I think it'd probably be a good idea, um, to, uh, yes, to do that.
An extra requirement outright.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? We provided you with enough information. Mark?
Yeah, I just need to think about that entrance thing. I'm not sure that I really understand that, but I mean, they've got an entrance at the O-1-3, O-1-5. If you're talking about their own.
They, their own entrance, uh, student, street, uh, it's not, not like you open, when you go to the O-1-5 or O-1-3, they have a common entrance that you walk in, you have to get in the elevator sometimes, or they have different offices.
Yeah.
Or an independent.
Type thing, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe, yeah, or they don't have a a common public entrance, I guess. That might be a better way to, yeah, I'll, we'll.
Dedicated.
Dedicated.
I'll talk about that. Yeah. Okay. All right, I got it.
Any more questions or comments on this before we go on to the next item?
We're good.
Okay. Item number nine, discussion in public hearing on an ordinance to amend the variegated sign ordinance town of variegated Africa. And again, this, now are we to vote on this one tonight, Mark?
Um, that's what it's advertised for. It's whether y'all are comfortable with it or not. I mean, it's up to you all. It's ready to be voted on. Um, the only thing that has changed in the ordinance other than what was in your packet is a comment I received from the town attorney on one of the definitions, and that was an abandoned sign. And we just beefed that up a little bit to, to make it really more aligned with the city of Knoxville's, um, definition. And, uh, that, uh, it really was a pretty minor, pretty minor change. Uh, let me see, I'm going to have to jump out of the PowerPoint and, uh, I can pull up the signed ordinance if, if you all need to go through it. Um, let me just say that, um, you know, we, we, I kind of went through the ordinance in pretty significant detail back in February and talked about the committee that was formed to work through the ordinance. Um, I do have a comment from one of the committee members that I'll read in, in a minute. It's a public comment. Um, and, uh, you know, uh, we talked through all the sections. Pretty much it's a complete overhaul of our existing sign ordinance. But I think, and I don't know of any part of it that's not being improved, um, in my, at least in my opinion, um, from all the, the feedback that we received from numerous meetings that we've had with Sign Ordinance Update Committee. We've had a variety of different, you know, philosophies and, uh, you know, uh, entities that have been involved and given us a lot of, of feedback. Not that we've always agreed on everything, uh, but I think it's made for a better, better product. Um, we didn't have this on the agenda in March or April because of the COVID nineteen. And I was hoping by the time May came around that we, that we'd be able to meet in person and go through it. But, um, so we do have it on the agenda for a vote. Um, in, in the packet, um, or that I emailed out, there were a few areas of the ordinance where, uh, our Sign Ordinance Update Committee met on April thirtieth or give their final input into our ordinance. We actually talked for about three hours, uh, went through it one last time, or maybe not a last time. But, uh, you know, um, to get any, any comments that they may still have or concerns that they may still have, uh, about the ordinance. Um, and, um, those areas were, were shown in blue in that marked up version that I'd emailed out. There really weren't anything, at least in my mind, that was significant, uh, in those changes. Um, we added a clarification on the application process for how someone may apply for a sign permit if they have a, uh, temporary sign that requires a permit. And I'll walk them through that and what would be required. Um, and then just a couple of minor definition changes. Um, and, and then clarifying a section of, uh, the multiple tenant ground mounted signs to, uh, to really take away, um, a requirement that, um, an entity had to have at least ten tenants in order to qualify for two smaller forty square foot signs in lieu of one sixty square foot sign if they have more than four hundred feet of street frontage. So that was really what we talked about. Um, and again, I can go through, pull up the ordinance. I'll have to, to, uh, get out of this screen share and go to a different, uh, different screen. But it's, it's not a problem, uh, if y'all want to go through those things and, or if you have any other specific questions, uh, that, uh, you have for the, the ordinance, uh, I'd be happy to. I've looked at it once or twice, I believe, over the past few months. So it's, uh, it's, uh, been an interesting undertaking, but it's, it's been, we've learned a lot. And I think we've got a, a content neutral document, um, and it has a lot more clarity. We, we've been working on some illustrations to, um, demonstrate different aspects of the ordinance. Uh, and those will be kind of a, um, attachment addendum to the ordinance, um, that people can use to help them understand what we're talking about when we talk about an interstate interchange pole sign and where is that area, you know, and those kinds of things. So, um, so I don't know if y'all have any specific questions you wanted to go over at this time. If you, if you do, I can pull up the ordinance and the marked up copy and we can, we can go through it.
This is John Green. I have a comment. One of the times that we have a flurry of signs, of course, is during the elections. So I went through them to try to figure out how that's, how that's covered in this ordinance. And I had trouble finding it. So then I went to Google and I finally discovered that the election signs are covered by the Tennessee Freedom of Speech Act. So would it be possible to put a reference in parentheses or something so people can understand that that's what that is? Cause I don't think that's a common knowledge to everybody that may be wondering how they, where they can put their election signs. Either maybe in the definition or in section one oh nine dash eleven in parentheses.
Yeah, we can add that in there. Um, it, yes, there was a reason why I didn't put that in there, but, um, but we can, we can do that. Um, it's not a, not a problem, um, to add that for clarification. We can, we can put that in.
If you have a valid reason for not doing it, that's fine. It just seemed more user friendly, like if somebody could find those words in there somewhere because the word election sign or campaign is not in the, in the ordinance at all. So.
I'm trying to figure out a way to do it without trying to focus too much on content. And I just don't want to, I don't want to really, we've tried to make, we've tried to keep the ordinance free of content. Um, and I've got, I need to figure out a good way to address that in terms of political signs.
If you could give that some thought, it'd be great. Thank you.
I can, I can run that by the town attorney too and just get his thoughts on it. But he's very much aware of the, that provision of the state law. It's very, honestly, it's very different from our current political sign provisions. It's a lot more liberal. I mean, it allows for a lot more signage, a lot bigger signage than what we currently provide for. Um,
Well, let me, let me clarify. I'm not really asking you to add any section in. I just thought in that section where the term Tennessee Freedom of Speech Act appears, maybe in parentheses next to it says referenced election campaign sign.
Yeah. I understand what you're saying. I think it's reasonable.
In the ordinance somewhere so somebody could find them. It's not aware that those two are the same.
Yeah, that makes sense.
It's the title of that, of that previous section. So I don't think that's.
Yeah. Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, we can, we'll figure that out. Yeah, that's, that makes sense. Anybody else have any, any questions? Again, I can pull up the ordinance and go through it. It's going to take me a minute to, I have to stop sharing this screen and I'll bring up the other screen.
Um, Mark, I was going to bring up the, the specific issue with, um, oh, uh, the, the jeweler.
Yeah.
But you know what? I think that's something I need to sit down with you and, and the more I think about it, the more I'm reading it. They already have one sign facing, it's a weird shaped building. It's an L-shaped building. So they have the sign facing the Kingston Pike. They have a sign facing Campbell Station. So, um, I've still got to work out that with you. So I might just do that separately and independently. I'm just kind of struggling with it. Um, the other thing I thought was the signs in the lots are, um, in the residential areas are six square, permitted to be six square feet. That's a big sign. Or is anyone else uncomfortable with this, the six square foot sign? That's three feet by two feet. That's a big sign for, uh, to be in a residential lot. Why did we end up on six square feet?
Well, I'll tell you where that came from. It came from the current size limitations on, or provisions for, um, real estate signs.
Oh, okay.
That's, we actually allow real estate signs on a residential house lot to be up to, uh, to six square feet. So I'm not, and that's right or wrong. Actually, we had conversations about that with the, uh, with the Sign Ordinance Update Committee. Let me go to that section. Um, well, and, and basically we ended up just basically sticking with the current real estate signage provisions. And in fact, that type of sign is a real estate sign on a residential house lot. In, in the case of content neutrality, we couldn't really say a real estate sign. So we just basically said a temporary parcel sign for a residential house lot can be up to six square feet and six feet in height. But it's the same physical parameters that we currently have for real estate signs. And, and those are really the most common signs that you see on house lots anyway, for the most part. Um, so that's, that's where that came from.
Okay. Well, that makes sense now that you say it that way.
I mean, one thing we did add to beef up protection a little bit there was more clear setback requirements for those signs. I mean, if they're in the right of way, even, I mean, with this ordinance, uh, they, they would be subject to being removed. So really, most of the things that we currently don't allow, we're not allowing in draft ordinance in this ordinance either. We're just trying to make it a little bit more clear. There are a couple of signs for commerce, for businesses that are allowed or in, at least proposed that we don't currently provide for, um, like a freestanding building fronted sign. Um, we're just acknowledging what we see happening. And it's really, doesn't seem to create a harm with the intent of the sign ordinance. Um, you know, like the sandwich board sign at, uh, French Market, for example. Um, you know, it's, I, it's not really, it's not really an issue to me in least. So we're just providing for it instead of, you know, um, saying you can't do that. Um, but you do have certain physical parameters that you have to satisfy if you choose to have a sign like that. So, and, um, so.
Have we addressed so that we don't, have we addressed so that we don't get the tire wholesaler situation again? Where you see the one on, um, Campbell Station Road right off of the state? Cause that's unattractive.
I would say in this ordinance, you still on a corner lot like they are. Because they, you know, even though it's a short street, Campbell Lakes Drive is a public street. So they front on Campbell Station Road and Campbell Lakes Drive. So they, they like Walgreens are allowed to have two WalSands, one facing each public street. And then they potentially, and they do have on their parcel two ground mounted signs, as long as the signs are at least a hundred and fifty feet apart. Uh, what we did provide for in this ordinance was a requirement that the ground mounted sign on a corner lot like that, it does have to be perpendicular to the street that it's, um, associated with. So you can't have two signs facing the same public street that are perpendicular across the property. Now, the, one of the signs has to be perpendicular to one street and one perpendicular to the other. Um, and that's, that's always been a little bit, we don't really have anything currently that says that. Um, same way with the address numbers. If you're on a corner lot, you only need to put the address numbers on the, on the ground mounted sign that is actually associated with the street that gives you the address, not, it wouldn't make any sense to put it on the other, the other sign that faces a different street, because it could be confusing.
Okay.
So the short answer to your question is we really didn't change that. The corner lot still can have a ground mounted sign perpendicular to a wall mounted sign. Um, but that certainly is, and if, if y'all want us to change that or revisit that, we can, we can do that. Um,
I'll have to look at that on KJIS to see if, uh, any of the things that we just put in may have done something to prevent something that, that's just, it's offensive. I mean, it's offensive. It's annoying.
Well, yeah.
This is Ed. One, uh, one related comment relative to the tire store that came up in my, my mind relative to the ordinances. You know, they use basically wrap around signs around stacks of tires.
Yeah.
And, uh, you know, that's kind of like having the vehicle in the parking lot that's a sign too. But, uh, if you all looked at the, the kinds of things that that represents, like the.
Yeah, we addressed that actually in this ordinance by clearly, um, stating that those type of signs are, are not provide, are not permitted. Um, let's see, I'm trying to find out where that, there's a, there's a section in here that under the prohibited signs that talks about that. And the illustrations that Holly put together, I think had a picture.
Page two. I didn't remember that. I remember the flags and the, the things like the blowing men and all that stuff.
She had one, yeah, one of those.
Didn't remember that when I looked at it the other day.
Yeah, um, under prohibited signs, uh, bollard covers, tire stack covers and similar signs.
Okay, thank you.
And that's currently not in our ordinance. So.
Yep.
We just wanted it to be clear and enforceable that, yeah, that is a sign, you know? So we have in this ordinance language, it's real clear in that regard. On the screen there, if y'all can see it, um, is the, the town attorney's, um, request to change abandoned sign. It's actually a, the sign that we did not originally propose to change.
Does anyone else see it?
I, I do not see it as well.
See it?
It's just a gray screen, Mark.
Okay. Well, it's good to know. Um, well, basically abandoned sign currently is a sign which identifies or advertises business lesser owner, product or activity has been discontinued for ninety days or more. And what we're proposing is that it's any sign, including its supporting structure, erected in conjunction with a particular use for which the use has been discontinued for a period of ninety days or more, or a lawfully erected temporary sign for which the time period allowed for display of the sign has expired. We also address temporary signs, uh, in that definition. Uh, it's potentially falling under an abandonment and being subject to removal. Let me see if I can.
Makes sense. Can, can you, um, email that to us?
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out how to share my screen on this. For some reason, it's not letting me. I was afraid of that and nervous. Maybe I'm, I have it. Uh, yeah, I can email you that. I just don't know why it's not, not doing that.
All right. Thank you.
I don't know. But that was the only change that, that I got from the town attorney on the ordinance. Uh, the, uh, you know, like I said, the other items that were discussed, the April thirty meeting were in the, in the blue, um, language in the ordinance that I'd emailed out a few days ago.
Mark, we did not address the bay signs for the tire store.
What? We did not address what?
The signs in the bays. You know, about one foot by eight feet on that tire store.
Hanging sign.
Yes.
Oh, yeah. Um. Let's see here.
Is there anything in here? I didn't think about it at the time.
Can y'all see it now?
Yeah.
Okay, good, good. Okay. Uh, yeah, let's see here. I, I was thinking we did address that.
Well, you might have after I left one of the meetings or something, but.
Yeah, let me look under that. We did add a few signs to the prohibited signs list and added some clarification. And uh, let's see, I was thinking that might be one of them. I'll just have to look into that. We may need to add that under the prohibited signs, just to be more clear. Yeah, I can do that.
Yeah. I know you've lived with this more than I have in the last six months.
Yeah. Well, that's a good point. I'll, I'll look at it. And if we haven't provided for it, I'll add some language and, and share that with you all.
And Mark, have, have we covered uh, parking trucks, vehicles outside of the business?
We got that a little more clear too. Yeah.
That's in there.
Yeah. Yeah, I added some language to address uh, an issue that I dealt with personally with somebody having a uh, basically a camper. It wasn't a, you know, vehicle you drove, but it was a uh, mobile structure. So we added that uh, to the, the prohibited sign section that uh, it, if the sign was attached to, suspended from, or painted on any vehicle or similar mobile structure, which is regularly parked or situated on any street, parking lot, private property, uh, blah, 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 then it's a prohibited sign. So we, we beefed that up too a little bit on the uh, the vehicular signage. Um, we tried to make a list of the signs that we most frequently have uh, issues with. And, and if we, if it wasn't really clear in our current sign ordinance, we tried to make it a lot more clear.
Um.
You know, by questioning it.
Uh, where do we stand on uh, grandfathering? Is there any grandfathered in things that were?
It's the current, it's the same basically as the current ordinance. Yeah, we didn't like, we didn't really change that. Other than we did make it one clarification. Uh, I think the current ordinance says if you change any sign at all on the property, then it loses its grandfather status. Well, you, you could argue that that might be a little temporary sign. So what we, what we clarified there is if you, if you're changing any permanent sign in any way, that that could trigger an abandonment of, of a non-conforming situation. So uh, just a little clarification, just to make it clear that we're not talking about temporary signs.
Well, it's been uh,
You can see.
A job that you've done here.
The definition of abandoned sign is there in blue uh, on the screen now that I've got it shared. Um. And that's mostly from the city of Knoxville. I kind of tailored it more to kind of a hybrid between ours and theirs. Um, let me just scroll down through a little bit more of the ordinance real quick and show the other areas. We actually define what temporary means. Um, because we wanted it to be clear on these temporary parcel signs that um, you know, temporary means it's, it's related to something that has a limited amount of time. And it gives the sign administrator the authority to question whether a sign has lost its temporary status. And if they can't prove that it is still needed, then it would be subject to being removed. We don't currently have that language in the ordinance. Um. I added this temporary parcel sign application review section uh, under the administration part of the ordinance. And that's just to, that's in there. We've got like, you know, how you apply for a wall mounted, you need to include, how you apply for a ground mounted sign, what you need to include. This is an additional section about how you apply for a temporary parcel sign and what you would need to include uh, for that, just to be clear. So it's all together in the same part of the ordinance and people don't have to, to uh, go to some other document to find out what they need if they're applying for a temporary sign. Um, real quick here, I'm just going through the areas that we changed based on the feedback from the last sign ordinance update group meeting. I will say that, yeah, go ahead.
I've got a question and, and I can't remember, maybe I've asked it before, but the guy with the uh, uh, with the Statue of Liberty suit on and the arrow.
Yeah.
That stands out. Did we cover that?
Yes. Yeah, we did. We covered that. Um, it uh, let's see what he called that. It's, it's under the prohibited sign section. And that was another one that I wanted to be clear about. Cause I personally had to go out and ask people to not be doing that kind of thing. Um, I don't know where, where it's at, whenever I found that section. But uh, it's in the prohibited sign section. It talks about people that are, you know, displaying signs, unless it's protected by the U.S. Constitution. So that would be different.
Right. You know, section one oh nine eleven is the, is where prohibited signs is.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I'm looking at this.
Mark, don't forget you have to read.
Hmm.
I'm sorry. Don't forget you have to read in John Hoffman's um, remarks.
Yeah, I will. Yeah. Let's see. Let me go back up here to that prohibited sign section. Yeah, okay. So one of the things, let's see, that I added in here. I don't know if I got it somewhere. Yeah, I'm trying to think of where it was at. Might be in the definition section. I know I've addressed it. I know I've addressed it. I just don't know where I'll pin where I, where I put it. But I do talk about people that are doing that. It's not allowed.
I don't see.
Unless it's protected by the constitution, it's not, it's not a permitted, permitted sign.
Well, uh, uh, number D says any sign with flashing, chasing, pulsating, twinkling, dancing.
Oh yeah, this includes individuals holding signs not otherwise provided for in accordance with the United States Constitution. That's it. Yeah. Uh, anything in red stuff we added. So you can see how we've made that, that more clear.
Does my favorite uh, putting out your product um, count as a sign?
Putting out, oh, you mean like equipment?
Equipment, yes.
Uh, well, it depends on what you have on it, I guess. Uh, it could fall under a vehicular sign, you know, if you look at K there, but uh, that's probably gonna need to be addressed through zoning.
Okay.
We, we discussed that in one of the sign meetings.
Yeah.
If they don't have a price tag on it, then it's just sitting there. Some people, I think, uh, well, not so much in our town, but they store stuff on the inside when they're closed. And then during the daytime, when they're open, they put it outside just to where they've got a walkway for people. Of course, it, it is an advertisement, I guess, that they have that product for sale, but uh, um, you know, in city Knoxville, they've got price tags on things, but uh, I don't think we have any of that here.
Yeah, K there on the screen is, deals with the vehicular kind of signs or, or a mobile structure where you're trying to use it basically for advertising. Um. So that's that one. Um, did may I else have any, any questions on that? See, let's go down through the other changes that we made. Um. Interstate interchange pole sign, we had to reduce that to two hundred feet. Um, because uh, when we mapped out the interchange, it, there was a parcel where that might be an opportunity for them to have a sign. So we, we did change that to two hundred feet. And I will say the two hundred feet, all the existing entities that have an interstate interchange pole sign are within the two hundred feet. So we're not creating a non-conforming situation with that language. Um, let's see. Yeah.
I'll explain again why it's not likely that these places can have a pole sign on, like the doughnut shop, doughnut, doughnut shop on Campbell Station.
Why they couldn't? Well, they, they would be too far from the interstate interchange right of way. It's two hundred feet. And that parcels is further than that. Basically, most of the, the properties that already have the opportunity to have an interstate interchange pole sign have one. The only ones that would have, be able to have one that don't currently have one, uh, there's a couple of undeveloped properties off of what would be Snyder Road Extension, uh, that would probably qualify. Um, and uh, that's more or less it. I mean, there's really not, not a lot of properties that are going to qualify for those, for those signs. So this language actually is a little bit more strict than what we currently have for those type of signs.
Any more questions or comments?
Uh, we'll say the other change that we made from the committee meeting on the thirtieth uh, was this section here dealing with the uh, primary permanent ground mounted sign. Uh, what we were trying to do uh, with this was if you've got a property and you've got a lot of frontage, you're a multiple tenant development, um, is, is everybody knows these, some of these multiple tenant signs, it's, there's a lot of tenants on them or they're kind of hard to read because they're, they're trying to put too many tenants on a fairly limited space. So what we were providing is an opportunity for the uh, property owner to, in, in lieu of one sixty square foot sign that they might be permitted on a, on a four hundred foot frontage, you know, uh, that they could have two forty square foot signs, as long as those signs were at least a hundred and fifty feet apart. So then they would, in a, in essence, they'd be getting twenty extra square feet. And then they could distribute the tenant listings in a little bit more uh, space and make them hopefully a little bit more legible and effective for the businesses. Um, so that was one thing that we did. It's a little bit of an addition to what we have currently. Um, and uh, originally, we had language in there that you had to have at least ten tenants to qualify for that option. And um, we decided to take that out uh, at the last uh, signed committee meeting. They felt that that was really unnecessary. And if you've got the frontage, um, that much frontage, then what does it matter? Uh, how many tenants you have. Um, so that was the other, the other change. And I think that was really, for the most part, that was, was the changes that they talked about. Um, there's some, there were some, you know, philosophical differences, I guess, on signage in general. Um, and I'll read John Hoffman's comments uh, on a couple of areas of concern that he has. He was on the committee, an excellent member of the committee, provided a lot of great input. Um, and uh, a couple of the things, if you want me to go ahead, I can just read his, his comments on this. Um, he says, "A few items for your consideration prior to approving the signage amendment proposal. Uh, it was a pleasure to serve with the fine committee to review the sign ordinance and bring it into compliance with the recent Supreme Court decision. We spent many hours on this work and the resultant package reflects our effort and especially that of the town staff. The proposed document provides much-needed clarity in addition to removing non-compliant verbiage. I want to offer a minority opinion on two issues. Um, one is I believe that the provisions for both, for the size of both wall mounted signs and ground mounted signs are larger than necessary. This is particularly true for wall mounted signs. Several relatively large wall mounted signs are apparent during a short drive along Campbell Station or Kingston Pike. It is ne- is it necessary for the signs to be this large? Is this visual image the one we want to present for the town? Left unchanged, we will see many more large signs as the town grows. I recommend reducing the permitted size of such signs. Uh, the second comment was the language regarding temporary signs is much improved. However, the language permits a very large number of these signs to be simultaneously displayed. The result is or could be a cluttered look at certain times of the year. As we continue to build out the town, this cluttered look will increase. I recommend reducing the size of temporary signs. Reducing the number of times per year a given business could use them and limiting the number of them simultaneously permitted on multi-tenant properties. I encourage you to reflect carefully on what you think is best for the town and its residents and what is most consistent with how we want to visually present town to residents, customers and visitors. John Hoffman, one one three four one, Gates Mill Drive. So I think mostly what John probably is talking about with number two there uh, is the shop fairytale signs that we have. We've had for a number of years. Um, it can get a little busy during the holiday season. Uh, and uh, I understand certainly where he's coming from with that. But I think that's really what he's talking about with the temporary signs. Um, so I don't know if y'all have any, any thoughts or, or feedback on that. Again, we, we talked through all those things with the committee members. Um, and uh, you know, most of them are comfortable with what we, we have currently with the shop period or the temporary signs that we do allow. Um, but uh, we certainly can do whatever you all want to do, revisit that uh, if, if you wish. I think one thing that we don't provide for in this ordinance is the grand, grand opening sign. That would just fall under the, the temporary parcel sign now. So it would be limited at twenty square feet. Um, we currently have the, the large grand opening signs that actually the town owns, and those are thirty-two square feet. And they're getting pretty old and they're really big. Um, and we just haven't really been pleased with their appearance. Uh, so we kind of wanted to revisit that. And uh, we, we could still provide for grand opening signage, uh, but I think it needs to be of a size of a physical characteristic of the other shop fairytale signs and it can probably look better.
Mark.
Yeah.
Um, just to add, um, I know the temporary signs, um, that was a very hard fought um, win for the businesses in the town of Farragut that just wanted to have some ability for temporary signage from time to time. Um, I, I agree that it could get kind of busy during the holidays, but that is our shop Farragut campaign. It is an opportunity um, for the businesses um, to have something out. It is an opportunity for the businesses to have something out during that time period. I don't, I understand the concern, but I also don't have a problem with the fact that we have, we rely on our businesses for 65% of our revenue. And this is a small, to me, it's a small thing at a time when there's a lot going on. We've got lights and Christmas trees and it's, you know, it's a busy time of year anyway as far as what we're seeing. I think it's a nice nod to our businesses to allow them some opportunity to market themselves. And I support keeping that, keeping it the way it is and supporting that. So that's just kind of where I stand on that.
This is Ed. I would echo Louise's comments. I have a tremendous amount of respect. I've known John for a long number of years. And again, I would echo what Louise said.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, I mean, it can get a little busy, especially during the holidays. I understand where John's coming from with that. It's kind of a tough one. What we were trying to do with this ordinance is to at least try to address the physical aspects of those signs and make sure that they look as good as they can and are consistent. Does anybody else have any questions or anything you'd like to go through? I think that was mostly the changes.
Were there any, you have any insights into John's other comment about the size of the sign?
Well, I think what he's talking about there, and I don't know if he's still on the call or not, he may be in bed by now, but...
I think he's still there.
Okay, well, he could probably tell us what he's, I think he's concerned just about the size of the signs that really we currently provide for. Because we really, this ordinance doesn't really change the size of the signs in general. It really doesn't. It does allow for a little bit taller signs in some cases. And the reason for that was to provide for the space to make the sign hopefully more attractive overall. In other words, give it a minimum two-foot base that ties it architecturally to the building that it represents. And in order to do that, we had to allow them to go up a little higher. So the goal there is, yeah, you get a little bit taller sign, but hopefully it's a better-looking sign. As far as the square footage, I think John's concerned about the 60-square-foot signs that we currently allow and that we're not proposing to change in this ordinance, that those are maybe too big. Prior to the 60-square-foot sign being created and updated in 1998, we only allowed 40-square-foot signs. I'm sure Betty can remember that. And I think all the ground-mounted signs at that time also just, we only allowed them to have the name of the center, so Village Green Shopping Center or, you know, Parry Town Square or whatever. Based on, you know, working with the business community and when we updated the ordinance in 1998, the last major update, that was something that came out of that effort, working with them. They wanted a little bit larger sign and the opportunity to display tenants in a multiple-tenant development. So I think that's one of his concerns is just the size of those signs and whether that's appropriate for the town if we want to continue to provide for those or if we don't.
And I'll add to that, this is something I've learned through the years of being on this planning commission. As a suburban community, that relies on business-generated revenue. Street presence is a very important thing, whether it be by sign or by actually being able to see the sign on the building. And of course, people drive faster now than they ever have, so street presence has to happen in about a second or two. So it's very precious, a very precious importance to our, a lot of our stores, particularly the ones, you know, used to be, you see the Village Green Shopping Center where it gets set back and you don't know what's in there. So for them to be able to be seen at least in their, in that, the street signs or when you're peeking through and seeing, because we're seeing banks go up. And street presence is important and being able to be seen from the street is important. So I understand John's concern with that. But then when you're a community that relies on business-generated revenue to the tune of 65%, you kind of have to think about how your businesses are going to thrive and be seen. So that's the push and pull of that.
Louise, I can tell you, those are the same points that were discussed back in 1998, about the street presence and the speed and how you're going to get a glimpse of the sign and recognize what's there and the multi-tenant and whatever. Your points were all part of why it is what it is right now.
This is John Green, and I would second that. Just as a consumer, when I'm driving down the road and I'm trying to find out what's over there, you need a second to be able to read a sign as you go down through our Kingston Pike or Campbell Station. So I understand we don't want to have overly large signs, but it needs to be large enough so people can see and comprehend what they're reading.
This is Betty. It's my opinion that the street number at the top of these signs can tell you where your destination is. And you can see that, those street numbers in a glimpse, but you can't read a whole sign. I don't care how big it is because you can't read the whole sign if it's got several tenants on it. So I ask people to look for street numbers, know where they're going and look for the street number.
I would love to see more consistency in that, Betty, the street numbers, because that's the hardest thing to figure out. You're looking on the building, you're looking in the front, you're looking everywhere for, just to get what block you're on. And that can be very frustrating when you've got, when you're driving on a Kingston Pike, when your people are crawling up your butt and you're just trying to figure out where you're supposed to be. So I like that we're talking about having some consistency about having address numbers.
Yeah, this ordinance colors that, don't you think, Mark?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's one good thing that, actually, we did that back in 98, started requiring the address numbers at the top of the sign.
Yeah, that was a part of it.
Yeah, and we're not changing that. We love that. It's, you can always tell when you enter the town, not only with, you know, less clutter along the street, but also you can identify where you're at on Kingston Pike because those address numbers, if it's a newer sign, they're going to be at the top. So we kept that. It's consistent. We basically just said it has to be eight inches at least because all the address numbers that we've had for every sign I've ever looked at, I think, has been eight inches. There might have been a couple that were bigger than that. But we want to just keep it at eight and just say this has to be eight. And that way, it's uniform. And, you know, somebody's not using their address numbers in effect as a sign by trying to put a really large number out there and it kind of gets your attention. And that's not really the intent of having the address number. So we just made it uniform and it has to be eight inches. The only other change that we made is on the screen here, and that deals with, if you do have a tenant panel sign, what we do say is, as a general guide, the outer dimension of any individual tenant panel should be at least eight inches in height to provide for the space necessary to improve legibility. And that gives a designer a baseline of what our expectations are. You may need a bigger space than that, but that gives people a general guide, all right, if I need to have lettering out here, you know, to make it legible, you know, what kind of, I don't have any idea how big of a space I need. We're kind of establishing that as a baseline. Again, you may need more, but at least it's a starting point. So we added that in there in blue there on the screen. So I think that was the last change that we made to the ordinance from the last sign committee meeting that we had. I think one thing that Louise, you talked about the tire store there on Campbell Station. One improvement that we are making to the ordinance is that if you do have a corner lot, one of the two wall-mounted signs has to be a .75 to 1 ratio sign instead of a 1 to 1. So it has to be smaller than the other one.
Yes, I remember that.
That helps, you know, in that regard so that you don't have two huge signs. Actually, our 1 to 1 ratio that we've had in place since 98 seems to be pretty good in terms of the proportionality of the sign to the building. I think when you start getting past that ratio, I'm sure you all have seen these buildings outside the town where it might be a nice-looking building, but then it has these huge, huge letters, a huge sign out there. It's completely out of character with the building's width. So we're pretty comfortable with the 1 to 1 ratio. We lowered it to .75 to 1 on those corner lots to try to address the situation like you were talking about.
So Mark, are you ready for us to vote on this tonight?
Well, like I said earlier, it's really up to you all. It's whatever you all are comfortable with. There's a few things that I've noted here that I can certainly change and send back to you all or we can talk about it next time. I'm going to take it to the VRB next Tuesday for their review. But I can do what John was talking about with the political signs and make that a little bit more clear. And then the signs with the banner signs that are recessed in buildings if they're visible from the outside and make that clear under the prohibited sign section. So I think that's all I heard from you all tonight on as far as feedback. Anybody else have anything else? Yes, yes, ma'am.
You said about the base signs I was talking about, they're not, some of those look like they're wooden. They're just inside, maybe one by 10 or one, two by 12 or whatever.
Are you talking about, you're talking about the signs that are recessed back in, you see them a lot of times in these tire stores that may have, usually they're banners.
Is a banner not a solid material?
Well, if that's what you're talking about, the ones I've seen have always been banners.
Well, either way, I don't like those.
That's been a kind of a gray area, really, frankly, and that we can make it more clear that that is a prohibited sign, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we can do that. That's easy. Yeah.
And so that will indicate that we can control the size of the material for this banner slash flag type thing?
Well, we just, yeah, I mean, if it's, I'll have to figure out the language, but I think the point is they're using fabric, they're using fabric material to, you know, advertise. And it is visible from the public street. It's probably something like that. If it's visible from the public street and it's being used for advertisement, then it would be subject to regulation and then we could make that a prohibited sign.
The bottom line is we've got a really nice building that's cluttered to the hilt with signs, between monument signs, wall-mounted signs, banners, wrapped tire stacks.
Yeah.
It's on steroids.
Yeah, yeah, you're right.
And John is right about the more businesses you have, the more signage there is and that's a, leaves a cluttered impression on people.
Yeah, that's right. And I think his real concern was just those temporary signs that are mostly seasonal, but they are permitted throughout the year. They're not that common outside of the holiday season.
So you're going to get back with us next month? Is that what you want to do?
Whatever you all want. If you want to vote on it, that's fine. Or if you want me to make those changes and put it in the ordinance to take action on next time, it's up to you all.
Does it make sense to get the RRB comments and then before we get?
That would be fine. Yeah, we can do that.
I do.
This whole COVID thing has kind of thrown this a little off balance, a lot of other things too, so.
Well, there's nothing coming up that we need to have this in place for.
No, no, no. It's not like we have to approve it tonight. So we can do that. I'll take these comments and if I have any at the VRB, we'll put them together and then I'll send out a marked-up revision and highlight the areas that I've changed. And then you all can look at that. And if you're ready to take action on it next month, we can do that.
Okay, okay.
Sounds like a plan.
I have one more comment. I really liked the illustrations.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Absolutely.
Yeah, Holly did those, so she, yeah, she did a good job with that. Yep. Right, that's good. Thank you.
To approval of utilities and there are none?
Right, yeah, we have none.
And citizens' form?
We do not have any that were not on the agenda tonight.
Okay.
Do we need to make a motion to defer that item?
On the sign ordinance, I guess it might be cleaner to do that, yeah.
I would move for an affirmative.
Second.
All of us in favor?
I can do that. Commissioner Dick? Commissioner Russ?
That would be an aye.
Commissioner Kyle?
Aye.
Commissioner Green?
Aye.
Vice Chairman St. Clair?
I get Houston's roll call, aye.
Yeah, Chairman Holly?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Paulin?
Aye.
Mayor Williams?
Aye.
Guess that's a good way to see how many people still awake.
True. We're still here.
Yes.
I would officially ask for a five-minute break scheduled in our agenda the next time we do this.
Okay, and we have a couple more people that were on here with us tonight, that Melanie?
Yeah, I don't know if Melanie's still around or not, if she is.
She's still here.
Oh, goodness.
That's good, yeah.
Well, thank you for being here. And will you be with us next month? Hopefully, we're in person with you?
Yeah, I should be.
Okay, great, great. And were you supposed to graduate this week?
Yeah, I was supposed to graduate over the weekend.
Oh, wow. Yeah, well, congratulations. We really, really have enjoyed having you with us and congratulations on graduation.
Thank you.
Where do you go from here?
Wake Forest.
Oh, wow. I love that area of the country over there.
Yeah, it's beautiful.
And so with that, we'll say congratulations. And the May 21st meeting, May 21st, 2020, meeting of the planning commission